Andrew sent us an email about something with campaign funds or something. Is this the one every year? I think I, they will send this.
No, we did not.
I honestly didn't remember.
It must be done by the end of January.
That's good.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right, good morning, everyone. If you'll rise and join me in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of British stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We call the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting, commissioner board meeting to order and start with public comment period. Is anybody from the public that wishes a comment? See none. We'll move on to our board meeting agenda, and we do have an addition, Cedar Mills Gun Club application and permit for a one-to-four day temporary on sale liquor license. Where do we want to place that?
Put it on consent.
Consent agenda. So with that addition, I'd look for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the board meeting agenda as printed, as amended.
I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. Consent agenda. Andrew, would you walk us through those items?
Yes. Approval of the December seventh board meeting minutes. We have approval of social services county and hospital accounts payable. Approval of tobacco license transfer from Red Rooster Foods to Digi any Awaju Holdings. Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-two.
Good job, Andrew.
I don't know if that's right or not.
It's all about confidence. Approved proposal for replacement of lighting at the Litchfield Transportation Building. Proposal for the replacement of the N C unit at the Family Services Center. Approval of medical consultant agreement with Dr. Whitney Reince. Approval of out-of-state travel for the county engineer to attend the twenty twenty-four National Association of County Engineers annual training. Approval of granting permissions for the center national bank lockbox. Approval of agreement regarding the Minnesota City Participation Program. Approval of board policy language changes to reflect Meeker County Health and Human Services Department. And approval of temporary liquor license for the Cedar Mills Gun Club. That is the consent agenda.
All right. Andrew, is there any questions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I just have one. So the climate, the condenser unit came in a lot cheaper than we budgeted for. Is that, am I reading that right?
That's correct, yes. So we also had originally included in the budget some temperature controls, but in conversations that I've had with Joel, we've decided to hold off on doing that work right now and do a larger temperature control project.
Oh, so we're not doing the whole?
Yeah.
Was that because it was too much or just?
No, thinking about phasing of things and, you know, doing a single temperature control project in the future makes more sense because we can ensure that whatever system we put in is consistent across all.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And then I had just one question in the payables, and maybe nobody knows here right now, but cardboard, we had a five thousand dollar McCarthy cardboard. I take a day, pick up cardboard, bring it recycling. Is that freight or?
That was the landfill.
Yeah, beyond our landfill.
I have to look at that. I saw it, but I don't remember what it was.
It stood out to me.
How long, how long a period was that for?
I don't, I don't know.
I'll bring it up later.
I would be interested in that, too.
I was gonna ask Greg or whatever, but I thought I'd bring it up because otherwise I'll forget. It just stood out.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. With that, I do see we have a resolution on there, so I take it. We need a roll call vote, but first, we need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I saw move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bredesen.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Ober. Is there any further discussion? And now, Corey, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Ober.
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. All right. Next item up is our Nicole and Mary Ellen. Hospital.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I will give a quick financial update. Couple months since we've been here, so speaking more towards where we're landing for the end of the year. Through November, we've seen a net operating profit margin of one point five percent, and we're projecting one point four percent for the end of the year. We did just wrap up our budgeting period, and we're looking towards a two point one percent operating margin for next year. This year, we've seen still significant costs related to contract labor and fortunately offsetting some of that, we've seen positive investment portfolio performance. So taking those factors into next year and trying to work around what we can do with our contract.
All right.
Questions on the financials?
I just, so our profit that we're predicting, our net, is above what we had a meeting yesterday? And you can add in here if you, the average net now is what, minus two?
Yeah, I think, I believe if I heard correctly, about sixty-seven percent of hospitals right now are trending with a point, a negative point five profit margin.
Yeah, so it's, it's a struggle after COVID all over healthcare right now, so.
Something that struck me when I looked through our Prime West things is, and I'm just wondering if you're probably not feeling this also, inpatient, the hospital expenses were down almost six hundred thousand dollars in expenses to our healthcare company. Hospital outpatient, two hundred twenty-seven below the average. Pharmaceutical expenses were above the average, which I think has been pretty much the trend. And I guess that was it. But are you finding that to be kind of the same feel you're getting there?
Yes. Both on the general inpatient side, we're seeing fewer inpatient, our stats have dropped over the years, inpatient, and moving more towards an outpatient-based service line. But then the expenses will fluctuate by area and department significantly. So we're seeing some cost inflation in certain areas of up to eight percent and others, you know, two, three percent.
So one of the concerns I think they talk about a lot at Prime West is they're not coming back after COVID. Things like baby well checks, I mean, things that are really concerning that aren't coming back because just if people got different habits or whatever. And I think every Prime West meeting, they always are expecting a boom, and it just, it didn't happen. And we're probably experiencing some of that, I would guess.
Oh, yeah. We, we saw that when we had anticipated the inpatient stats to kind of level back out, they, the trend has looked different over the last year and a half for us than it has historically.
Right.
And then if you would just kind of share with everybody, I believe today's your forty-seventh day of having someone?
Yes, we do. We also.
Forty-eighth, okay.
We have seen ER borders. It's become more frequent for us to have somebody, a patient who's in our ER. We're unable to discharge them, whether it be to another SNF or group home. So they end up staying in our facility and, you know, unfortunately utilizing care that isn't to the level of what they need. So we have, and many times that's uncompensating because they qualify from a medical stay from the payer standpoint. So we end up taking on the costs related to those inpatient stays as we try to find a place night for them.
And we're not the only hospital, because didn't they talk yesterday about the person who had been in so long, he was having his Amazon packages delivered to?
Was that a joke or was that for real?
No, that's for real.
My gosh.
Yeah.
So, so AMC, I'm on Health and Human Services, and that, that was a big one with them, but it's been a big one for a couple of years. I mean, there's just, it's sad for the person that's there. We don't want that. I think last time we had this, the staff just felt terrible that they weren't able to give him what they thought he needed. So it's an issue.
Also, yeah, since, since we've been here last, Mary Ellen Wells has joined us as the interim CEO, so let you help.
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to serve. I really appreciate Commissioners Johnson and Ober for their service on the hospital board. And I'm here for an interim period as we make the transition with Kurt's departure and then with the management agreement with Center Care in the transition and making sure that we utilize that expertise and knowledge while providing services locally. So I appreciate the opportunity. One, a couple of things I'd like to highlight. One is we've opened up our urgent care. We've seen a number of people who are leaving the Litchfield area and the Meeker County to get urgent care, and so we've expanded our services more on the weekends and into the evenings. And, and we haven't seen a drop in our emergency room or our clinics, which you sometimes do see that, but we haven't, which does speak to the need for that service, for urgent care. People are seeking it out.
So we're probably getting people that were going elsewhere because they wanted to be addressed in urgent care.
So we can keep them local.
And one question I always get, and I think I asked this on board, is I've had people, not always, but people have called and said, no, if I go to urgent care, do I have to pay out of my pocket? It works the same as your health insurance, right?
Yep, you receive the same cost as you would going into the clinic.
So people are aware of that, because they have a feeling that if they're going to urgent care, it's gonna cost them something, so.
The other I just want to emphasize, too, is that I know the building project has been out there as a topic, and we're, we've taken a pause. We're not stopping it. We're pausing, taking a really good look at what the project needs, what it entails. Price tag came in quite higher than what we had anticipated. So it's just prudent on our part to step back and make sure that we, we take another look.
And I think we wanted to make sure that whoever the new administrator is, sometimes they have a different idea of what, and Center Care has helped us with some planning and some things, so they provided, what's his name, Joe Larson?
Dave Larson.
Dave Larson to help. So we thought it was a good time to just stop him. So we're gonna go forward with it, but I think I really appreciate Mary Ellen being here. She's done a great job. The culture's going great up there and just, we appreciate, I'm trying to get her to stay, but her husband says no, they're going there so long. So.
Question, I, what are the issues surrounding our, our long-term residence, if you will, in our emergency room? What, what is causing that or what?
We, we've seen a variety of individuals, so it may be mental health, it may be kind of weight-related. So it depends on the individual specifically and then whether or not that, my understanding is we've seen, for this most recent individual, we've done, we've attempted placement interviews with a couple of different group homes and whatever, we were not meeting the criteria and then having to wait for the next. So it ends up taking quite a while to find placement.
So it's, is it fair to say that some of these individuals have specific needs that kind of fall in that gray area?
Yes, absolutely.
And so trying to find a?
Another, another example was having high-cost pharmaceuticals.
Okay.
That wouldn't be reimbursed under the stay to the place in which they were looking at going. So that provided a challenge as well.
Okay, that's just.
So if they, if they need services that say long-term care that was available, can't provide, like computer, am I?
Yes, yes.
And then I think the other case here, not too long ago, we had someone for a while who needed a certain, couldn't get into a group home, and I believe finally they opened one just specifically for that person, if I, if I remember right.
If I may share, I'm familiar with the situation that you're, you're referencing. It, it, it's about a community capacity, a lack of community capacity for this particular individual's needs. And this is a challenge that the hospitals, across the state are facing. And so I know on a larger advocacy in the state, we're all trying to work through this problem together. It, it's really tragic that in Minnesota, we have individuals that are stuck for long periods of time in our hospitals without the hospitals being compensated. The other flip side of this is that when those individuals are stuck in those hospitals, the county has to pick up the tab for the most part. Fortunately, working with Meeker Memorial in the past, we've had good success with partnerships and working together to try to mitigate the overall cost to the county, but where does it land, obviously? But really to ensure that we're providing safe resources for that individual to be discharged from the hospital. Without those safe resources, that individual or individuals in those situations will likely boomerang back into another setting, which continues to perpetuate the ongoing issues that those folks face with stability in the community, and that is born usually by the local county. Excellent. Again, it's a beautiful partnership. We're, we're very happy with the help.
It's, it's just not the answer for anyone. I mean, somebody has to solve this. I think, you know, there's some talk, I think at AMC about DH, State DH, DHS starting to reimburse for some of this because you're the ones that are causing issues with, right, with us having placements. I mean, he talked yesterday about transportation. Joe Schindler, what's his?
He's the vice president of policy for the Minnesota Hospital Association.
So he was at our board meeting and gave a presentation yesterday where a son had to come from Wisconsin to take his father, not very far away, back to where he, whether it was long-term care, because of the lack of transportation. So I mean, some of this is just, and that's being all over, the ambulance service or whatever, medevan, whatever you're gonna use. So it's a, it's a whole bunch of stuff.
We did have a robust discussion about our ambulance service yesterday, did we not? And we did have a representative here from Apple Valley.
Correct.
Who sat in and listened to some of the things.
And the, the state legislature has appointed a task force specific to, to that, so.
I believe he said that task force was going to meet for the first time this week?
They, they just have met once and they're continuing on, yes, just starting.
So, Mary Ellen, would you say that Meeker Memorial was an award-winning hospital?
Ah, yes, we did.
Alida.
That might have been, might have been Alida.
Softball, if I ever heard one.
It was a kitten ball.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well played.
Recently for being one of the outstanding rural hospitals in the state. And I, I, I'll tell you, I've, I've served in several hospitals throughout the state, around the country. And I do have to tell you that, and this is with complete candidness and truthfulness, that Meeker Memorial is special. It, it's a nice reflection of its community.
I absolutely second that.
And the, you know, Nicole talked about a two percent margin for next year, when we're seeing other hospitals really struggling even to get break even. So, and, and I put that on the tremendous leadership and the staff that we have at the hospital. Wonderful. And the clinic, the physicians, it's a, it's a robust, robust campus.
May I, may I read? Also, you received an exemplary provider award for demonstrating outstanding healthcare delivery practices and compliance to safety, honesty, and caring accreditation quality standards of the rural health clinics from the compliance team in November of twenty twenty-three, so.
What does that mean?
Means, that means, that means we're good.
That means we're good.
We.
Okay. You gotta dumb it down. Some of us are farmers, real jobs.
We had our accreditation survey, and they came through and gave us exemplary performance.
Other question, and I know we're on time here, but I'm always asked about providers. Are we recruiting? How are we doing? I know Center Care is helping. I don't know if Joe's got any information on that or you do. Where are we at with recruiting providers?
You know, I never want to say, the, the ink is, you know, the pen is close to the paper, the line for signing. But I, I don't want to throw it off, but we're, we're looking good for adding a family physician next year.
Good.
We are recruiting for more orthopedic support. We are looking for general surgery. Dr. Peterson has been a tremendous provider in this community for years, both doctor, Doctors Peterson. And we do need to find another general surgeon, so we're working diligently with Center Care to find that support.
That was one of my questions. I was wondering if you had a, a list of goals. And I know you already addressed the building has maybe come down that goal list a little bit, but as far as hiring doctors, I think I was reading in the minutes that we're close to maybe adding another one. And of course, the push toward continued search for a surgeon, because the one we have now is going to be very difficult to replace. And then if we're constantly working, I'm sure, on our nursing staff, you know, so that we're not using the traveling nurses and the overtime and those situations. I'm sure those are all on your goal list, Mary Ellen.
They are. And, and if I could comment, and maybe Joe wants to make a comment, too, but in terms of recruiting, really all kinds of healthcare professionals, but opening, maybe you saw it last night on the news, but the signing of the new medical school.
Yes.
Centricare. That was nice.
And the ability, and Center Care's real commitment to providing rural physicians, rural providers, rural healthcare providers is, is tremendous to see. It's unique in the country.
Yep.
Literally. And I'll, Joe, if you?
You said it well. I would just add that, you know, the strategy is to grow our own and, you know, find people from these communities that want to pursue medicine or one of the allied health professions and train them up with the idea that, you know, they'll, they'll want to come back home. So we're very excited.
Will there be an opportunity for those students to do some of their residencies, say in Litchfield? I was so hopeful.
Yes. For the medical school, the medical students have to do clinical rounds, if you will.
Yep.
So they'll need sites to do those clinical rounds.
Excellent.
Just an opportunity as we're affiliated or, or, you know, we have the agreement now with Center Care that we can participate in it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Couple things. I, I see that now the management agreement is official, correct? How will that look differently than what it did before? I know all the different things Center Care can pull in in terms of doctors, but what does a management agreement mean for Meeker Memorial now versus before? Because everything Paul touched on, I believe in that in terms of having a county hospital, there's a reason why there's county hospitals is to be more localized. And sometimes I worry that a big conglomerate comes in and changes the whole outlook of what that county hospital is supposed to be. So I have some reservations in terms of that, and I'd like to see how that, how you look at that and how you guys in the hospital board are gonna be looking for the next CEO, if they're gonna be an independent individual or someone married to Center Care also, which would make me a little, have some reservations.
So the agreement, the agreement reads that we all have to be in agreement on whoever's hired. So it isn't like Center Care is gonna say, this is your new CEO. We're gonna be involved in the search. So that's number one.
That's, that's for the CEO portion.
That's for the CEO.
And how does the hospital board look at that part going forward? Are they gonna want to have someone independent, or they're gonna want to have someone with Center Care cut out?
I want someone that can serve our rural hospital, that, you know, and that's what Center Care is gonna want. The idea for me is that, and as far as what we had before to now, we had, okay, I'll say buffet, right, like, where now we know, we've closed it up, we know what they're gonna provide, what they're gonna do for us. Before, you know, we did some things joking. Can you explain this a little better than me, but am I right? It kind of tightened it up.
The difference is, the board has hired Center Care. We're responsible to the, to the Meeker Hospital Board for the operation. And local control remains with the board. You know, we have to perform to the goals that we've established mutually, in the same way that used to hire a, a single CEO to do that. It's just that we bring, we bring a lot more resources that we think are beneficial and experience to that.
So before, when we, you know, we leased the clinics, and then we had an agreement, are you doing this or are we doing this? And this way, we know that they are gonna manage the C, the CEO. And nothing will, everything has to be agreement between our board and Center Care, or nothing will. And I don't believe anybody, Cass is on the board, too. I don't believe anybody on our board wants to get away from being what we are, rural hospital. But there's some reality here in what we can do for service and what we can't. I'll just give you a quick example. We're losing money by still doing sleep studies. What do we do? Fifty a year? It doesn't, you know, we have to have somebody come from.
South Dakota.
South Dakota to do fifty a year. So it no longer pays for us to do sleep studies. And besides that, a lot of people are doing them home ones, or there's one in Wilmer. So we're not gonna do those next year. But everything that we do like that comes before the board with recommendations from CFO and CEO before we decide that. But some of this comes down to what we can do and what we can't, which makes perfect sense.
Are you part of Center Care or are you Meeker then now?
I'm currently a Meeker employee.
Okay.
Remain.
We changed that.
She's gonna remain Meeker.
Gotcha.
CFO and CNO were going to be, we, we changed that, and now it's the CEO only.
Yes, and is that the management piece that you're talking about, though?
Management.
Which is a big one, though.
Absolutely.
It is.
And, and that's the one thing I just worry sometime is that if you compare what Meeker does versus, say, St. Cloud, which is the closest. And there will be a difference in terms of personal care, and I worry about if we're going down this marriage of that, are we gonna lose what we, what Paul just read? And that concerns me to some degree. As soon as you start managing someone, your influence is basically gonna be pushed on the board and. And then on enough boards where you're just, what the CEO says sometimes, it's like, okay.
Words are easy to say.
Yeah.
The actions are what you will be seeing, I think, over the next three years. And that's what to judge the management agreement on, is how does Center Care perform? And the board, the local board has the responsibility to, to hold Center Care accountable for that management agreement. And we, we, we will see.
I have a question, too, to tag off of Danny's comments. We have a CEO, we have a CEO of nursing, we have the finance, we have a board, we have all of these administrative people that we've had forever. And now, all of a sudden, we have a tie with Center Care to be the overall umbrella for all of these people. What are we paying for that, since we're already paying for a CEO or nurse person, a finance person? What, what is the cost to Meeker County to have Center Care be this management umbrella?
We, we do have a contract, and the, the annual fee is seven hundred thousand dollars for Center Care to provide management services. For a standalone CFO to run a, an establishment of our size, it's getting harder and harder to have the expertise that's needed. And for Nicole, as an example, one of the best CFOs I've ever worked with, by the way, but to be able to have resources, and I don't want to speak for you, but to have the resources that she can pick up the phone and call, or get some specialized services here at the hospital. The same with our nursing staff, our chief nursing officer, being able to contact other chief nursing officers in Center Care and learn what they're doing, and potentially partner on programming and services. I, I think you'll watch over the, over the course of the next three years and see those kinds of, and we should keep a tally of all of that. An example that just came up, if I, and just real quick, we have to replace our MRI unit. And initially, last year, we thought the cost was going to be eighty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars. And so then, now, we've started the process to do it, to make the change, and we found out we needed even more, and it's a half a million dollar bill. Now, we brought in, you mentioned Dave Larson, the facilities, managed, facilities person from Center Care, and his right hand, who understands this, they have a potential to, they have a chiller available within Center Care, that we need a larger chiller for this, this new MRI, and that they're able to provide, potentially provide that chiller. Those kinds of, I think we'll tally up and quickly see that the seven hundred thousand dollars is, is a tremendous investment for the return we'll see each year.
I think another example, just as we've evaluated this agreement over the last couple of years, there's a lot of synergies that are maybe not one-for-one, right? So the three forty B program is an opportunity that we have. So the three forty B program is an opportunity that we have to be involved in now that we have the clinic. However, um, Centra Care does also provide support to us. So just by having the rate, the agreement that we have, it allows us to have an additional revenue, other operating revenue line upwards of $700,000 a year. Now, on the cost side, we have one to two individuals internally who help manage that program, but Centra Care also provides half an FTE to audit it for us. There's not a direct bill back on. So there are a lot of, um, less intangible synergies that happen also with this agreement. Try to put, try to evaluate in that coming up with that management service fee.
So will Centra Care be bringing in some providers then to our facility to do procedures to?
They already have done some, they already have done some of that.
Bring some of your people in?
That's the goal. And candidly, right now, I, I don't know of a hospital or a provider in the state that can say that they are adequately staffed.
Nope. But I think we, we've sent some surgeons down to cover from Centra Care has, right, Joe? I mean, when we put out an SOS, they've been there. So this relationship didn't just start with this. It started a few years ago, Kaiser. And this has been a slow, um, getting to know each other and trust each other. The fact of the matter is rural hospitals aren't going to survive without some kind of help like this. So that's, that's where we're at right, and I think that we're going to find. And by the way, there's some goals in this management agreement that were established between our management teams and Brian and probably Mary Ellen, I'm sure. So they, they have to do some things too by the end of the year, so.
Yeah.
It works both ways.
And if I remember right, a while back in a quarter to the report, you know, the, the buy-in power, certain things that small hospitals can't get that Centra Care can, that we now have access to at a affordable rate because of that relationship, so that.
AI is going to be a big thing. We can't do much on our own, right? But Centra Care is going to be able to be very helpful. Here's another small example when we're going over to the bu, over the budget at finance. Al Leesman said, Brian was on the call. He said, what are you going to do to help us with this? And he said, well, I'm looking at, you need beds. We got some beds. I mean, there's just things that we're going to be able to get at a better rate and so we should do better. We'll see.
The things that I hear, of course, people approach me in the restaurants, local people.
For sure.
Approach me in the grocery store. And these aren't the folks at the top of the food chain as far as our medical team. These are folks that are worried about their jobs. They think, okay, we're going to partner with a conglomerate like Centra Care and they're going to come in and, and they're going to bring their own people in and then the folks that live here will lose their jobs. That's a concern of mine because those are the folks that approach me.
Sure. And, and I think if you looked at, if you, I, I had, I had, I was able to serve in Benson a couple of years ago as they were looking as a community. I think you can go there, you can go to Long Prairie, Sock Center, Melrose, uh, Wilmer, Redwood Falls. You can go to any of those communities and ask that question and you'll hear an answer that they did not lose their jobs.
They're, they're not going to take our nurses because, do you have all your beds open yet because of the shortage of nurses, Joe? No, everybody's in the same boat, so.
And alluding to what Danny was asking before, I think it was a big concern of the board too. Because one man can't have two masters.
That's right.
But through Joe and Ryan, and we sat down and we talked about that and the buck does stop them. So they'll have two masters, kind of, but not really. And so that led us to a lot of the confidence when we move forward. And, and Joe was a big player in that. He, he has been straightforward and honest with us all the way through. I did get an opportunity to do just exactly what Mary Ellen said, and that was talk to Redwood Falls and talk to Benson.
Painesville.
Painesville, yeah. And I didn't hear anything negative at all. Which, you know, at some point you always hear something negative. You just do, because that's, but.
The one difference is Meeker, we're in a much better financial situation than just about any other county hospitals. If you look around, I mean, it's impossible for county hospitals and they did quite, quite well. So I get the economics of it. I know the buying power and stuff, et cetera. I just worry about the actual patient care going from Meeker Memorial to Centra Care and seeing it firsthand what can happen. Where if you start to do like we do and use people as cattle and put them on through in dollars and cents, it'll make a good return, but if you're not treating the person always, you know, that's, that's a big, that's a whole thing. That's what you're trying to do.
Right.
Like keeping a bottom line, just right at that level because you are a nonprofit, so.
It makes, makes me nervous when I hear that they're sending, we, we can't take care of them here. We send them to St. Cloud, send them to Wilmer for their services where, I know we've had a little issue lately with, um, physical or occupational therapy. People ended up having to go to Hutchinson. It's.
I think she's talking about our cardiac.
I hate to hear of, of sending people out and they'll go, well, why even start in Litchfield? I'll just go to St. Cloud then. I'll just go to Wilmer. Though, those are things that concern me because those are the things I hear.
I wish when you hear those things, you'd have somebody address it with Mary Ellen or me or Paul or Kaiser back there. She's on the board. Because I know that they don't intentionally send anybody anyplace, but the fact of the matter is sometimes during this time, we do not have a service and I am grateful that we can call Centra Care and get a bed. There was a time nobody was getting a bed anywhere and we had the ability to work with Centra Care. And oh, by the way, we kept some patients that would otherwise and did some things during COVID, right? That otherwise we probably couldn't have done without their help. So, you know, I am, you, you're right to be concerned about these things. I had the same concerns. I think we just watch and find out this is going to be a great partnership. That's my goal, so.
Well, I think post-COVID, we're managing through something, so I.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, the partnership is, it is what it is and we're going to have to work through it moving forward. And there always be bumps in the road, but I appreciate, uh, you coming in today and, and presenting to us. Get an opportunity to meet you, Mary Ellen and Joe. So Cole, always good with the numbers. We appreciate that, so.
I like her charts.
Thanks, guys.
I can read them and understand them.
We better, uh, allow these folks to go back to work, so.
Have some treats.
Yeah, grab some treats on your way out the door.
My gracious, we, we've got lots of goodies.
Especially those pecan pie brownies. Did you have one?
Thanks. Appreciate it. All right, next up Kaiser. You are on deck, Meeker McLeod Sibley Community Health Services Director.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me to come here this morning and Commissioner Johnson, I, I like what you did this morning. We were, we're festive.
I see. There you go.
So I'm here just to discuss or to give you an awareness of the Community Health Board. For me, I have Commissioner Oberg and Commissioner Breddison who sit on the board with me. So this is all, I mean, they could basically give you, um, this presentation too. But I just have a few slides just, just to give you an awareness of who I am and what we do. And if you have questions, please, please let me know. So Meeker McLeod Sibley Community Health Board is a joint powers agreement with Meeker, McLeod and Sibley Counties. We have a mission to promote health, prevent disease and protect those who live, work, learn and play in our community. And we have a vision of healthier people with enhanced quality of life living in Meeker, McLeod and Sibley Counties. The work we do is statute work. It's one forty-five A. And it basically says that we have the responsibility for development and maintenance under local administration. Duties include making sure that we are assuring adequate local public health infrastructure, promoting healthy communities, healthy behavior, preventing the spread of communicable diseases, protecting against environmental hazards and responding or preparing to emergencies. We are accredited, just like you mentioned, the hospital just received the, the rural health accreditation. We are Fab accredited and we have been since 2017. And really this just gives, um, me as a leader and the board as, um, the board and our staff the ability to be proud of the work. We're making sure that we're, we are organized in this, in a, in the fashion that the federal government powers would want us to be. So again, we've been accredited since 2017 and right now we just, like as of yesterday, submitted our reaccreditation paperwork and I haven't hit the final button, but I plan to do that this afternoon.
So do you think that accreditation is something that we're going to continue? Is it a lot of manpower to?
The organization of it is a lot of manpower. The work is already actually being done. It's just basically putting it, it's charting or putting it on paper.
Think we've had that discussion. I think I expected more from the accreditation.
We were expecting, I think, the way that it was sold to us back before we were accredited is that there would be financial kickback, which we haven't seen yet. But at the recent Shack meeting, there's a whole process of things that the counties learned or the CHPs learned they had to do and we were like.
So maybe, okay.
My table was not stressing where everybody else.
There's a good reason.
And we'll see more of that as, because the state's accredited, so all of the work the state has to have us do is accredited work. So it, it flow makes sense. It just is a lot of like writing narratives and that seems like busy work. Our org chart, just so you see, and this will be changing, um, the Meeker side of things, as everybody knows, will be changing on January one. But so just so you have a good picture, we have Meeker, McLeod, Sibley Counties. And then we have two commissioners from each county that make up the Community Health Board. And then I'm the Community Health Administrator, so I report to the Community Health Board. They tell me what I should be doing. I've got six staff members and then a medical director that I work with. And then I partner with the public health or HHS directors to make sure that the work that we're following, all the work that we need to be following. And then each, each county has their own structure within that, um, that works for them. I, I say that we have three different communities, um, but we all work quite well together.
Can I ask who, who is your medical director?
I have Dr. Cassibula.
Now does each county have their own medical or do you just use?
Each county has to have their own and then I have to have one. This is our roster for 2023 and it actually is going to look pretty similar, I believe, but I'll find out from the county administrators after.
I knew, I knew when you saw that he's going to say, I didn't know I was on there.
Congratulations.
I knew I recognized your name. Now it shows emails. I don't like that.
The emails you delete?
Right next to no befores.
Danny, Danny, this is Kaiser.
You shouldn't advertise to the spam people that you don't do your own.
Yeah, I know. I know. That's why Andrew cringes.
You've been reporting her emails as phishing.
That's why I can't get anything.
Don't pay any attention to this Kaiser.
So kind of what is a Community Health Board? This is something that was designated by the state in like the nineteen seventies or as my kids would say, in the nineteen hundreds.
Oh, great.
And you, uh, we have to have a population of at least thirty thousand people. So Meeker County alone cannot be its own CHB. Sibley County cannot be its own CHB and McLeod County at the time in nineteen eighty, when we became a joint powers agreement, they also were not large enough. So now Meeker or McLeod County has grown enough where they could be standalone, but it just serves the benefit of their county to stay within. These are the capabilities or the, the foundational capabilities or areas that we focus on. This is actually brand new to us. We received an email, I want to say in October, saying, congratulations. These are the new, um, capabilities that we're going to do. We're following the federal, um, guidelines now. And they weren't all that off from what we were already doing, but this is their, I took their picture because that's what we use now. So communicable diseases, chronic disease, environmental health, maternal, child and family health and then the linkage, making sure we have access to care, which as we've heard from our hospital folks, it's difficult. And then we have the ways that we are going to do that. We do surveillance, we do, um, performance management, equity and all those other good things. So these are the things that guide me, um, in the work when we're, when we're moving forward with an initiative. We have to make sure that we're considering those things. Some of the programs that we do are, are women, infant, children, or a WIC program, healthy homes, family home visiting, family planning. We do SHIP, which is our statewide health improvement, um, emergency preparedness. We always do health equity or try for health equity, Project Harmony, which is a substance use disorder for parenting women and then our child and teenage.
You guys not doing anything with the elderly then per se, or it doesn't really listed here?
Good point. Yes, we, it depends on the structure of the county. Some have it in their social services and some have it as public health. But we do have, um, within the county, we do have, um, adult care coordination.
Okay.
And then I had mentioned Sha, or Shack. Shack is an advisory, excuse me, advisory committee that's made up of local public health association, um, some state, commissioners and, um, the local public health, uh, association. That's the word I was looking for. So it's a, a nice little organization that came to be in nineteen seventy-six and we discuss, um, current matters. Like at our last meeting, we discussed, we discussed safe water because that is an issue in some of our states. Yeah, suicide is also a, a good topic there too. But, um, we work with the Commissioner of Health, who is Commissioner Cunningham, to, um, to continue to further the conversations.
Is, uh, so I'd say we're in the south central region then? And then is there, like, your Meeker, McLeod, Sibley is the other, I mean, are all of them set up kind of in a three county or?
In a three county structure.
Or how are, is that?
They can be, um, a city can be large enough to be a CHB. Some counties have, or some CHPs have five counties, some have two.
Okay, I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, there is no.
It's more of a pop, kind of a similar population or similar.
Basic. Yeah. If it, um, some have, some have been organized more recently and some have, go back like ours to nineteen eighty. Um, I think it just matters on what works, what makes sense in capacity. Um, in the northern states, you know, they have a much larger territory for the CHB.
So has Shack been successful in gaining funding for certain, certain things? I see it, it makes recommendations. That's why I'm asking.
They make recommendations for how funding should be utilized rather than getting the funding. They might, they might, um, yeah, they're not a, they don't necessarily get the money. They, they say this is what we should do. So at the last Shack meeting, they were able, we had some dollars for, um, I don't know how to say it. So dollars to, that will be continuous dollars and how to distribute those. So they, they voted on how to, what their recommendation was. And that was the final, it goes through a few steps and then the Shack meeting was the final meeting and then the contracts go out. We are organized, or we're a member of the Local Public Health Association, which is our like advocacy group. They keep us up on all the legislature or we speak to them when, when we need some focus. Currently, we are working on the beginning steps of our community health assessment. We have, um, a five-year expectation for doing community health assessments. It's in state statute, um, reaccreditation, understanding the new foundational cap, uh, capabilities and implementing work, workforce development, um, making sure that we are kind of recovered from the COVID work that, that some of the staff, um, you know, some of the, the things that, that some of our staff saw. And that we're creating a more resilient, uh, workforce. Emergency preparedness is definitely where some dollars are focused right now and then sustainability. And just a little bit about me, I do live in Litchfield. I was a nursing home administrator prior to this role. So the continuum of care and hearing that, that, um, when Nicole mentioned something about the, the cost of medications, what probably people in this room might not know is when you take a patient, if they're Medicare, you assume all costs. you assume all cost and then you get a reimbursement. But that doesn't, the reimbursement doesn't necessarily match the, the costs of care. And sometimes if you're on a, like a biologic or a medication that's thirty thousand dollars a month and you know your reimbursement's gonna be twelve thousand dollars for that month, you cannot take that, like no good business person would take that deal. Even if, but then they're your community member. And so you're like, oh, that was my librarian. I need to find a way that happened. Cause I, I was a nursing home administrator here. So that it's, there's, um, when you lose local power with an administrator or feel like you're losing local power, I could totally understand your question on the CEO for center care. But I really feel like the board and the hospital organization has control over the CEO. But when you lose that local power and you don't know who the administrator is, or you, you lose the ability to have those connections. So I appreciate when we can have people who are local or live local or, or want to be local. So that when we're having these hard conversations of how do we get this person out of the hospital? Because they're taking up care and get them into the nursing home where it's appropriate and they understand the client. But then there's that cost.
The other part is we own healthcare. We've got to be able to expand that more so we can get people home and keep them there. That's, I think that's gonna be the long range answer. But that's not cheap either. And then Medicare will say, you know, fortunately, my dad wasn't on it very long and it would have been fine either way for him. But when they cut you off and you don't have any other funding available, then what? So, so much of this is gonna be fixed, fixed somehow at the state, but I don't know how. Do you?
How or when?
How or when? Because there's, there doesn't seem to be any common sense. I mean, when you have to come from Wisconsin to take your parent.
From the hospital to Meeker Manor.
Six blocks. It's totally, I mean, there's got to be. Could you put them in a wheelchair and wheel them? No, because then you're liable. We know that we can't do that. Cause then you're liable if something goes wrong.
I always think of like CCT. They can't do that.
They have a stretcher. They have a bed.
They can, but not all the time. And then with their hours. And then they're short. So it's a, it's a struggle. And, and I think if they ever fixed it, we'd all save a lot of money. Right? That's what I think.
That is the challenge though, you know, you have to put money upfront.
Right.
To save money on the back end.
That's always the challenge with this board too.
And in particular, in particular with transportation.
Absolutely. So it's stuff that you would never think about unless you heard the story. Like the Amazon packages coming to the ER because the guy's been slaying there so long. Sad. Anyway.
You have to have a safe discharge. Yeah, so, yeah. But thank you for letting me come. Anybody, anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you Kaiser.
Thank you Kaiser.
I thought for sure you'd wear lime green today.
Why?
So I drive a blue Bronco.
He thinks it's green. Have you noticed? He's colorblind.
And he has confused our commissioner. Confused my vehicle with the green Jeep.
Yesterday, we leave the hospital and goes, well, where's your lime green Jeep? And she's like, I don't drive a lime Jeep too.
He goes, John Deere green?
It's a Bronco.
It's blue.
Oh, no, there it goes.
Like that. I thought you were gonna pour that on him.
I would have squirted it.
Please colorblind Paul and move on. Yeah, really.
Eyes are the first thing to go.
Goodness. Take some snacks with you.
Paul, you're on deck.
Oh, come on, no.
And I might mention, I might mention, I forgot to mention at the opening of the meeting that we have a one-year anniversary in your department. Stacy Bach is celebrating her one year, so.
Take her to lunch today.
We appreciate her.
Of our OSS team. Very good, good employee. Good morning. The order of business I have before you is social services contract. But if I may, just take a moment of your time. You know, we're talking about some of the, the home healthcare and transportation and those types of issues. And we're talking about the individual that is, is, or people that get stuck in hospitals. These are some of the things that we need to, we continue to have local resources. Part of our Health and Human Services restructuring has really been with an eye of providing enough time for some of our supervisory staff to work within their programmatic schematics to develop resources for our community. I'm really pleased to hear that Kaiser is a supporter of local control. Um, I think that's a very good thing for us when we look at both public health and social services. We look at the broader expanse of the systems that we need to work in. A strong local voice, in my opinion, is always to the benefit of our constituents. Also, our constituents are on the hook for the cost of things that are not reimbursable. And so that's where we need to have our strong voice to ensure that, that we can bring those things that are funded into our community to reduce that, that cost for things that we're mandated to pay for. So, um, local control is a good thing of opinion for some of these systems. Or at least a seat at the table if nothing else.
I would agree.
So with that, I have before you, social services contracts. Within our contracts, a number of the services are also funded by different funding mechanisms. But these are the contracts that are really tied to our local funding. We have, uh, what, Chairman, how would you like to proceed? Do a block? Do you want, how do you want me to navigate?
One recommended motion for all of them.
I, I.
What I want to know is, when I look through these, are these exactly the same ones we approved a year ago?
Yeah.
Uh, not exactly.
Well, they're, they're, sorry, yes.
Some of the contracts have changed.
Yeah, there, there, there are a few changes and there are a couple of additions.
Within the contract, but it's the same group.
We have two new contracts for our guardianship. Those are service, we were working underneath those contracts. They were actually held by other counties for individuals that we have living in those counties. And so we were accessing those services. But when we do more than a year's worth of service with a particular contracted vendor, I believe it's to our benefit to have a contract with them. Then we have the legal kind of wrangling that we can do there. In particular guardianship contracts, because they have a court ordered authority. If there is not a quality assurance mechanism that's afforded through the contractual process, it can place individuals at risk. Um, and so we have, uh, Solid Oak and Prairie Support Services are new contracts for them. Uh, ProRooks, UCAP is the same. Woodland Centers Consumer Support Program is the same. Our Woodland Centers Purchase of Service Contract has had significant revisions and updates. Many of the updates that we were talking about in our contractual, contractual approval process last year had some concerns from our county attorney. Woodland Centers was able to modify their contract to address most of the concerns. We're still concerned about cybersecurity on almost all of our contracts, but that's a cost issue.
And that woman, you've been working, she's been working with all the social service. You guys have been working as a team to try to get this aligned.
With all of the member counties have worked with, uh, Woodland Centers as a team to develop the contract. We were able to change the contract from paying for uncompensated care via the sliding fee to compensating them for programmatic losses. This changes the dynamic of reporting required for CC, or excuse me, for Woodland Centers to us. Because they had some issues with data privacy, being able to provide us adequate information about how they were expanding those funds. Now I think this puts our representatives at the board in a better position of understanding where those costs are, are lying and where there might be losses or gains, depending upon that. It also meets our statutory requirements of having performance metrics based on those, performance of those programs on behalf of individuals.
So you were seeking information. They were saying they couldn't give et cetera, et cetera.
Yep, yep. And this is really based, the, the primary focus of our performance metrics are really on, not on the individual access, individuals receipt of service. That's very difficult for them to talk about. But the macro level of that service as well, with access being a primary concern. And we've also had some discussion about staff retention, which we may see coming forward. It also puts us in a position to have more conversation about the quality of the services we receive from Woodland. And they do provide good quality of service. So it's, it's really something that they should be able to just knock out of the park and demonstrate that as well. And that fits in with all of our other plans and requirements for, um, mental health services.
So I'm assuming you've looked over, this has all been over, gone over by you, Brandy, all these contracts or no?
Yes, thoroughly.
Sorry.
I'd like to just jump in. Kudos to you on the POS, Woodland Centers by pushing that envelope and having it more open.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that part of it. And I think it'll be good for both, for both sides in the long run.
It clarifies our relationship and allows us to have lines of communication about our relationship.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that this answers some of the questions. I'll call them that we've had in years past. We've had some discussions about, uh, service and the way things worked. And I, I think you're, this is kind of a culmination of some of those.
It, it is. And it puts us on, as I stated, it puts us on a position of having communication without having issues of data privacy kind of hold down.
Well, I think Woodland's been a willing partner in this from what I've heard.
Pardon me?
Woodland's been a willing partner to do this, to have this discussion. I mean, I think we're all, we're all on the same side here. Everybody. The answer is always, from what I hear is, I mean, these are good things to get done, right?
Certainly.
So, and some of this was.
Hasn't been updated.
No, that's what I was just gonna say. It was time for updating. So I'm glad, I'm glad also that I got.
Yep, I, I agree. I'm not, I'm just wanted to make sure I was looking at it.
Are we gonna do one motion for all this?
I, I'm fine with one motion.
Can we, can I do that now? And then we, or do we have more discussion? And all the, all this is already built in the budget. So there's no changes.
Yeah, no changes. This is all.
Just so everybody, yeah. Just approving them. Yep.
July.
Okay. So with that, I'm gonna move to approve the two thousand and twenty-four social service contracts, including multi-county community homes, Lutheran Social Service semi-independent living skills, Crow's Nest, Crow's Nest semi-independent living skills, Divine House semi-independent living skills, Lutheran Social Services Guardianship, Solid Oak Guardianship, Prairie Support Services Guardianship, Pro Works Day Training and Habilitation, UCAP Family Based Supports, Woodland Centers Consumer Support Program, Woodland Centers Purchase of Service and Central Minnesota Jobs and Training for January first, two thousand and twenty-four to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. There you go. Was that right, Paul?
I know, don't even.
Something in the middle there?
We followed along. It was well done.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner.
I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Bradison. Is there any further discussion?
Is this an annual, annual? Because it's dated here for one complete calendar year.
Yeah, I, I'll be back next year. And we do our review of our levy contracts on a annual basis. We don't run those out past two years because there's changes in dynamics in the budgeting process. And there's also changes in funding schematics, et cetera. So we don't wanna go beyond here.
All right. With that, uh, motion by Commissioner Oberg and second by Commissioner Bradison. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
One contract that will be coming forward for you that was not on this list was with CCT. Venville, Candy Hill County and myself will be meeting with Amy Neeland of CCT to review that contract to ensure that those services are adequate to meet all of our needs. I look forward to bringing that forward to you folks. I'm probably in February.
Okay, good.
Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thanks, Paul. I appreciate it.
Get some, get some treats there, Paul.
Yeah, I'm gonna hang out a little bit longer, but yeah, I'm gonna.
Okay, hang out.
Big con pie brownies. Oh, my gosh, they're so gooey.
Morning.
Good morning, Greg.
Director, I got the one item water plan funding for twenty-four projects. As you know, the board approved, uh, the budget approved thirty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars for twenty twenty-four projects, of which the Water Plan Group designated seven lake projects and twelve lake test, water testing projects for a total of thirty-one thousand five hundred and four dollars. So the projects are on Bell Cedar Lake, Clear Lake, Lake Jenny, Lake Washington, Lake Ripley, Lake Stella and Star Lake. That's the seven lakes that are affected. Maximum of four thousand dollars approved. Clear Lake, they only approved two thousand dollars for that one. It's nuisance management and they approved, like Ripley, just fifteen hundred dollars for that. Star Lake Aeration, they usually ask for twenty-five hundred. This time they went half of that. It went fourteen forty-eight, half of the value. So otherwise, the other money is out there at seventy-eight hundred dollars for lake water testing for individual lakes, up to twelve lakes. So far this year, we've only spent about eleven thousand, um, eight hundred dollars is coming. So we usually don't spend that thirty-one, thirty thousand dollars. It's earmarked in case the projects go forward, but very rarely do all the projects go through, so.
So eleven thousand eight hundred's been reimbursed or applied for or?
Passed usually around.
Funded.
Twenty thousand that gets funded. Usually you have that thirty thousand, thirty-two that's allocated historically where it's been.
So I just got a couple of questions. I should know this, but how do you determine how much you're gonna give? Four thousand is the most.
Well, that was the max we put on the application. So the max they could, they could apply is four thousand. It has to be fifty percent in kind. So the project has to supply half of the, the project.
So.
Supply the other half.
So who decides, so who's the decider of who? So I have Lake Stella, fifty-seven thousand dollar project. Where, where does that, rest of that funding come from?
I'm not sure.
So who decides who gets what?
The Water Plan Group.
The group does as a whole?
Of which I owe Greg an apology. I told him I would be there, but I did not get back from AMC in time to join the meeting. So I do apologize for that.
You know, except for AMC.
Okay. Now, projects like these, their funds, these are different from the funds that come out of AIS.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a different.
Different projects.
Yeah.
These projects, we try to tailor more towards erosion control type projects. That's the ideal project. We sort of want a conservation district and joint partnership with them. But it doesn't always, you don't want to have enough, like this, Clear Lake's got a nuisance management, vegetative management. It's not erosion control, but that's the project that came much more than money. I think ideally this group would like to do sediment control on the lakes first, would be their first priority, I guess.
And AIS has to relate to aquatic invasion species. Money can't be spent on.
For rip rap and, and tiling and that kind of stuff.
And most of these stem from lake associations. So I always have to compliment what wonderful lake associations we have in this county because they really work hard to take care of our local lakes, so.
Well, and I think, and I think that's been the, kind of from what I recall in the past too. It's, we never use the funds, but these associations all know what's there and they're always trying to find projects for it. So, so, and some associations do a better job at being able to come up with a plan to utilize them than others, but.
And a lot of these, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, they have to work a little bit with the DNR, soil and water.
Conservation District.
Yep.
And so.
There's hoops to jump. Yeah.
It's a lot of pieces to that puzzle that gotta fit in time to put in for the grant.
Yeah.
Like this large project on Stella, I'm sure they're getting money from soil and water conservation. Well, cause it's very large projects, two big retaining ponds or ponds. So it's more than just our four thousand dollars.
And they can be, yeah, they can be a hundred percent funded combined with multiple agencies. So that might be the reason only.
And this is another area where one watershed may be participating in part of this cost. Some of the, yes, like sediment control is one of their big issues, so.
And these associations could then apply for funds.
Very involved in that.
And it might drop you thing to you according to those guys. They're not asking. That's the, we gotta remember, that's voluntary. But they don't ask, they don't get.
I'm assuming the reason why we're so low is we allot like four thousand per lake, but then they have to come up with other funding. And that's probably usually the, the reason why they won't spend our four is they can't get the other whatever.
Probably.
It's probably, that disparity's probably jumped even more this year because of costs.
Well, I think it's because of the local lake associations. Some of ours are organized and they don't, you know.
Oh, gotcha. They just request it, but don't have a great hand or is that what?
I think, I think they just don't know what they wanna do. There's projects out there that are quite near and down to what they wanna do. It usually takes years, I think, for these lake associations to figure out exactly what type of project. I think, I think they just don't know what they wanna do, there's projects out there that are quite near and down to what they wanna do, it usually takes years, I think, for these lake associations to figure out exactly what type of projects they wanna tag.
To get on the same page.
Yep.
You're not saying anything against the DNR, but sometimes it's before we can get him to come.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And address the situation.
What do you mean not saying anything against them, you just did.
Uh-oh.
And I understand Emily Javins has moved on.
There was a butt.
A butt.
I tell, I heard a butt.
She's no longer our area hydrologist, she's got a new job.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, DNR.
Yep. You don't hurt anybody, huh?
Definitely a butt in there.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the twenty twenty-four water plan projects for funding recommended by the Water Plan Group.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bradison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the Water Plan, uh, Group's recommendations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Greg, and I just wanna bring this up, as long as you're in the room, I've gotten a lot of calls on, uh, on, uh, the wind and solar, and planning zoning, and from residents, and I just wanna kinda throw out to this board in general that I think, um, with this large transmission line and being a year out, that we might need to look at putting on a moratorium to kinda gain some, uh, and I don't know how we can do that, so I'll let Commissioner.
Gain some planning room.
Well, maybe eight, up to eighteen months or something, because we won't have a definite plan where the transmission line is even going for a year yet, and, and that gives us the time to let planning and zoning find out more of them details before that their board can come up with recommendations as well. Um, so anything that's in the works, I think you maybe got one small solar project in the works right now, but I mean.
In the docket right now, yes.
But we're gonna, with this amount of federal money that's being pushed behind this, you're gonna have companies coming out of the woodwork looking at all areas along this transmission line, and that's, I, I don't wanna have us.
Can we do that?
As long as you, you have to, you can't do it to stall, but do it to buy, buy time to come up with solid ordinances when you don't, we don't even know where it's going yet.
Mr. Chair, would this Board of Commissioners put that moratorium on, or would it be a planning zoning?
No, moratorium comes from here.
Okay.
So it'd be an interim zoning ordinance, so you would use Minnesota Statute three ninety-four point three four as the authority, but it's only up to one year.
Okay.
So you have to make sure. Are work effectively working.
So then, in a year, you have to have a plan in place or, or.
It, it's, it's so that you have time to be able to, um, study and then adopt regulations. And so, as you know, the Planning Commission's been working on, on the solar, updating the solar ordinance already, so.
But now, to my understanding, wind is, wind is.
The projects that you're talking about, trying to put a moratorium against, you really don't have any authority to put against, because they're so large, they just leapfrog the local jurisdiction anyhow.
I thought you said we could put a moratorium.
The solar project is happening, I had a two hour conversa, an hour conversation with them yesterday, it's speculative, just like XL Energy, they're sending out feelers to people who are, are potential customers of theirs, but it's so large, it's gonna be so large, it's gonna be over the twenty-five megawatt, um, threshold, which would just leapfrog over local jurisdiction anyhow.
I think, I think there's a bit of confusion on the discussion, there's multiple discussions going on, I don't know how we can bring that in and kind of.
So what, what, what Greg is referencing is that there's been communication regarding a large wind project that would take up sixty-four thousand-ish acres.
Something like that.
But, but that, the size of it would likely be above, would we have any sort of regulatory authority over? If we were to adopt a moratorium, it would only be for projects that we have regulatory authority over, which for solar is anything below fifty megawatts, for wind, it's below twenty-five megawatts. Otherwise, it goes right to the state. We, a, as you know, as you've directed the Planning Commission to do already, they are working to adopt, or working to develop and then recommend to you ordinance language regarding solar, um, and, and Greg, where would you anticipate we would be coming back with that?
Well, coming back in January, like Danny and Julia at the last one, we kinda ironed it out within four or five different criterias, the Planning Commission has no appetite in kind of, kind of restricting the size limitations per landowner, that we discussed about a year ago.
But, but regard, regardless.
How was that here now?
Let's, let's back up, let's back up, regardless, regardless of where the Planning Commission's at with it, they are gonna be bringing forward a recommendation to you in probably January or February, adopting a moratorium at this point would, if we, it's a, it's a two-step process like any ordinance, where we have to set a date for a public hearing, hold the public hearing, and adopt the ordinance, earliest we'd really be able to do that is probably the second meeting in January, and then if you're talking at that meeting, or one of the two meetings in February that we're coming back with an ordinance, and you adopt that ordinance, our moratorium in place is for thirty days. Because you've adopted a moratorium, and then you lift the moratorium once the process of studying the regulations is complete. So we can certainly go back and, and come back to you with a, um, a draft ordinance at the January second meeting, but as we're at with the timeframe of the Planning Commission at this point, by the time we complete that, it may be just about moot, is what I'm getting at.
Okay, can I go back to what you said about the state regulatory, so they control setbacks and everything at that point? We no longer do?
Well, we don't have, we're not part of the permit process anymore at that point, it's like the transmission line, we have no.
It's like the transmission.
We have no jurisdiction over.
But we're, but we're also assuming that that's the only company that's coming to town, and what I'm, my point is that we're gonna have companies coming out of the woodwork on a project the size and scope of this, and we don't have a firm handle on what the size and scope of this is at this point. There's been a lot of questions coming from planning and zoning, I've fielded several phone calls, and until we iron some of that out, I think we need to kinda call a little pause here, or whatever, how are we do it, I, I'd like to see, we only get one shot at it, there ain't no dual. And we're, we're a year out from any official plan, I mean, so I don't, I'm a little concerned that we're getting an ordinance too soon in the game that might be obsolete before it's written. Before we have all the facts.
We're pretty strict about what we have for ordinances.
Well, and, and we can always go back and amend our ordinances, the, the solar ordinance, we already have a solar ordinance in place, we're amending that solar ordinance. And so, uh, because we've had all these solar projects up to this point, and they've had to follow the ordinance that we already have, so if something was to change with the transmission line project that would cause you to say, we wanna take it off, take another look at our regulations, we can certainly do that. Um, I don't know if there's significant value in pausing the work the Planning Commission's doing, just to wait to find out where the transmission line is gonna go, to then come back and have the same discussions that they're having right now, whereas if something was to significantly change, it would make us wanna say, oh, we, we, we need to address this other issue that is now ripe, that, that would be the time to take it back to them, but without knowing what those issues are, we can't study an issue. I don't think it's appropriate to put a moratorium in place, I don't know if it would be legal for us to put a moratorium in place, to just say, we are going to sit back and wait and see if there's something that we want to study. You need to actively be doing the study.
What's your opinion, Brandy?
Well, I really think this is a policy decision that the board should make, however, I'm not clear on the board's position for what they're looking at as far as the regulations or setbacks or the zoning requirements, I think what we have here is a Planning Commission that is reviewing what their thoughts and ordinances are, and then, I mean, we'll bring it forward to the board, but it may not be the exact, because the board kind of gave some parameters, and it sounds like the Planning Commission necessarily didn't agree with all those parameters, and so they would come forward with that, their recommendation, and then this board would have to see if that's the appetite that they want for that ordinance. If the board then says, that's not what we want, then there would have to be additional discussion about what we would want to include in the ordinance, and that would take more time.
So we have to wait till we see the ordinance?
We could, we could.
Basically.
Well, we could establish a moratorium, we have to publish it for ten days, but it has to, we have to make sure that it's for, um, if we're looking to protect the public health, safety, and general wel- welfare, and so it needs to be an emergency reaction, kind of like a concern that there are these, there's a concern that there is renewable energy that is coming in, and you're, the board essentially is concerned about whether or not the ordinances that we have in place are going to protect the public safety, the health and welfare of the citizens. And so that's kind of our criteria of what we need to look at, our current ordinance is something that this board really wants to dive into further. Knowing that we already had this discussion, gave the recommendations and kind of parameters to Planning Commission, sounds like from what has been shared that the Planning Commission has kind of been taking, um, those conditions and, um, altering them or changing them a little bit, so. Do we have the authority to do it, I think there is a basis, if the basis is because of the pressures for renewable energy, I don't think that we can use the reason that the transmission line is coming in.
No.
That's not the reasonable ba, reasonable basis, but if we're getting concerns that we really need to take a deeper look into whether or not the ordinances are sufficient for wind and solar, I think that would be reasonable. The other option is, do we just continue to have discussions with, um, Greg, to go back to the Planning Commission and say, these are kind of the conditions we're looking at, and do it in our normal fashion without a moratorium? So the moratorium is going to, it will cease any further applications coming in, and it will hold any applications currently pending.
So if I may, I, I just wanna get the, something straight, that you indicated the Planning Commission is deviating a little bit from what?
The, the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission is doing their work, which is to work to develop a recommended ordinance, you know, we, we gave them some general ideas, and then they are taking that and, and doing what they do, which is, you know, think about these things, and from their perspective, and they'll make a recommendation, right? We don't know exactly what that recommendation's gonna be yet, because they haven't finalized, so, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate at this point for us to start to have a really a discussion about Planning Commission's going to recommend, because we're not there yet.
And it was specifically targeting solar in that particular discussion. And then what the big bigaloo was, is then Greg read that letter to the Planning Commission about the potential sixty-four thousand acre area where they're looking at wind, which was a whole new aspect that we really weren't looking at, because I didn't know it would be that sustainable in a Meeker County environment in terms of wind power, and usually the wind turbines, large number of them are based in windy areas, you know? And obviously, the transmission line is propelling these companies to use that line to possibly strategic, strategically put these wind turbines, which is a concern, I think, for anybody in Meeker County, and that's where I have the biggest concern myself, and I think Greg kinda uh, had that same concern towards, uh, the Planning Commission, like, what do we do, and I don't know if, like you said, if it's a state thing already, we have no control over that, but at least we can give guidelines in terms, if we need to shift our wind turbine guideline, I don't know. And, you know, and he sent me the wind turbine guidelines that we currently have, you know, but this is a, quite a bit bigger, bigger, you know.
Yeah, the Planning Commission discussed about four or five different setback options, which I think everybody's on board with, which would shrink the actual footprint of where they could put these systems on existing parcels now, setbacks from roads, setbacks from property line, boundaries, setbacks from residences, whether they're owners or non-owners, which we have it in place, we're gonna, so we're gonna shrink the footprint in these parcels where these places, and we kinda protect the residents, shielding them somewhat, a little bit more distance, what so far? What the, what the Planning Commission is, is working.
That's all they basically were working on.
And they didn't wanna touch the limiting the size limitations per parcel or, or section as of right now, they didn't wanna talk about that. And I think you guys heard that, the number of the board members are not on board with that, the Planning Commission members, so.
So, Mr. Chair, what we'll be looking for today then is, uh, direction from the board of whether or not you want us to prepare the, the draft ordinance and the, the publication notice for approval at the next meeting, so that we can get that on and published for the second meeting in January for a moratorium.
Now, a moratorium places a halt on something, and then we put a date on it, so if, if someone wanted to come and, and puts like this little thing over by Atwater, there's what, forty acres of solar that now provides electricity for the turkey farm across the road, okay? If we put a moratorium out, even a situation like that would be halted for, did I hear, a year?
It'd be until you complete your study, until you adopt your regulations.
A moratorium can be up to one year, and then renewable for one year thereafter, so could be potentially up to two years per statute. But it needs to cease once the study is complete, and you have to have good faith and reasonable efforts to continue that study, you can't just wait six months to enact a study.
It's not a stall tactic, it's, it's a study.
And, and the study isn't anything formal, I mean, it doesn't have to be anything where like we have to hire anyone, it's just the review process of our ordinance, so it could be really well done by the Planning Commission.
And anything that's in operation is not affected, it's just if you wanna come in and apply for a permit, we're not gonna issue a permit for a year, or up to a year.
Up to.
And what is the real purpose of that, why would you deny someone the opportunity to come in and apply for, I wanna put, like.
So.
Barb, Barb has on her farm, three, three solar panels, why would we do that?
Let's say hypothetically today, our, um, our setbacks from, you know, a property line for, you know, new solar farm is a hundred feet, but we're looking at it and saying, we really think it needs to be a quarter mile, it's a significant difference from what the current regulation is.
So it's not to stop them.
Someone would be able to come in and, if, while we're going through that discussion, someone would be able to come in and apply for and, and build that project at the current regulations, even though we know the direction that we're going is, we want it to be more strict, that's the reason that you would adopt a moratorium.
To be clear, the county should not, in my legal opinion, ever say that we are not going to be allowing solar farms within Meeker County, we are not allowing wind farm. There has to be reasonable restrictions placed on them, and so this is not saying eliminate all renewable energy vendors from being able to come in, it's saying what are the reasonable ordinances, setbacks, requirements, that someone would have to follow in order to get a permit? So they would have to be reasonable, so people should still be able to put on solar farms, but it's just for the board, putting a moratorium would just halt that so that everyone would be treated, um, equally during this time, when we're realizing that there's a rash of potential vendors coming in, and this is kind of a culture change, that Meeker County wants to make sure that they are set for this, this change.
The, the, the intent is to place a pause to provide adequate time to conduct the study, so that it doesn't need to be rushed.
And I think that's.
Uh, and, and that declared, the reason I thought of those, or brought this up, is because of the amount of phone calls I got with questioning, and when you have that many questions in the room, you, you tend to not have all the facts on the table, I, I mean, whether it's this board or any board, when, when we have a lot of discussion on a topic, we usually don't have all the answers in front of us, and all the research done. And so a deeper look, longer look, there, there's no rush, because the, I think the size and scope of this project has, um, I'm gonna say has grown into something that we probably didn't anticipate six months ago, and, you know, we're starting to talk about, we start to talk about sixty-four thousand acres between two colonies and, and three thousand acre solar farms, I mean, we're starting to talk about the size and scope that, what, how many solar farms in this county do we have right now, six?
Six.
Six, five acres, like thirty acres right now we have in this county, probably under.
And they're talking about.
Now we're talking a hundred times that, plus wind, I mean, that's where I, that's where it's like, oh.
I'm on Julie's side, anybody should be able to do whatever they want with their property, I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yep.
But I, but I think to have a study and make sure we're doing it right, just makes good common sense, because it feels like it's harder to go back than to get it right the first time, so we would look at neighboring counties and see what they're doing. Nobody is trying to stop it, I, I would never do that.
I don't, I can.
For whoever wants to do what they want with it, same way when we have discussions about DNR by, whatever, that's fine. But to study it and make sure we're right, I think that's a whole different.
But to study it and make sure we're right, I think that's a whole different topic that we're doing it.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
And Wright County did a solar, a moratorium on solar in twenty twenty-one. I think Redwood County did one in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
An ordinance, right?
Correct, and then they just, um, adopted new ordinance with different requirements.
I mean, there's some people that think these things affect your, there's, I've heard people say it can affect your health, your animal health. I mean, there's things out there, I don't know if they're true or not, but I've heard them. So, do we study all that or do we just, we just put in parameters? Is that what we're looking?
Well, I think that's, it's all part of.
Or nothing.
Study. I mean, you know, I mean, you, you have, the, the moratorium is the intent to lay all these things to the table and look at the validity of each of them and, and, and then how it applies to Meeker County. And as, you know, we can anticipate that the path of the transmission line is going to be proximity of where some of these things are. So, we can also anticipate what some of the environmental impacts are in those areas. I mean, for me, it's going to pretty much cut straight across my entire district from the northeast corner to the southwest. So, I mean.
But we don't know that yet, right? I mean, we don't actually, and we don't have any control over that.
Exactly, exactly, but.
Not control over that, period. We know that already.
But we can anticipate some of these areas and the different geographies that are in them areas. You know, and that's why I'm saying, I think, a moratorium to, let's just step back at this a little bit and take a deeper look, especially with the wind coming into the picture at that magnitude.
And, and we are elected officials. To do due diligence.
Exactly.
Well, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
And our con- our conclusion could be that we, the planning zoning standards are fine.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't even know, you know, once the wind thing, I'll be honest, that's, that was a huge scope and I don't even know our ordinances. I asked Greg to send them to us, like, I don't know what, Meeker County. And I'd hate to see Meeker County change drastically by us not doing our homework. If there's some sort of parameters we could put to, you know?
You never want to be the poster child of what not to do.
Nope.
You know, you know what I mean, I, I don't.
But I don't know how the.
Whether it's, whether.
I don't legally do that through the legal process because we don't want any lawsuits and don't want any of that. We're not saying no, but we want to say, we want to learn more information on all these renewables of how it's going to affect.
Who's going to do the study? That fall on Greg's shoulders then to inform us as to?
Planning commission does the study, Commissioner Murk.
The planning commission?
That, that's the work that they've been doing is they are, they were coming forward to with recommended ordinance.
And where do they gather their information from?
They, they, study is a broad term. You know, what they are doing is they are working to develop a recommended ordinance. That is the study.
I think Greg would be the leader of sharing that information and being that outreach.
And part of that's going to be educating this board so we can make a firm decision. Uh, you know, that's what I think, it's just, uh, giving us time to, there, there's a lot of things at play here. Huge things at play.
That are going to affect this county for a long time to come. That's.
Very long time.
Yes.
I mean, this is, that's why I said, this is in a, we don't get no do-overs on this. I mean, this is not a, well, this is a big, big project. And I think that, that I've, I knew it was a big project, but I think even I underestimated the size and scope of what this is going to be for the future. So, that's where I would.
Brandy, if we, if the planning zoning comes to conclusions on these ordinances and then we review them and approve them, can we actually lift a moratorium sooner than if it's a six months, a one year period too?
Absolutely, the moratorium should be lifted as soon as we have addressed the health, public safety and welfare of the, or the issues of.
Which is what I, the direction I would think the board would want to do as soon as we actually get the information. Thus, it's not a, it's not a stall tactic, it's just an informational trying to gather it together. So, I'm educated because I don't even know, like I said, I had to look up, ask Greg what are wind ordinances.
So, if, so if I'm hearing what this conversation, if we put a one-year moratorium on, we could lift it at six months or five months or eight.
Because essentially the, this is an interim ordinance.
Yes.
That ordinance will no longer be in effect once we adopt the final ordinance or whatever the.
Gotcha, yeah. It's to come up with a final solution, not a, okay.
So, do we, when we, if we make a motion for, I'm sorry, moratorium?
I was just going to say I would be in favor of giving them direction to create the temporary.
We'll come forward with the draft ordinance and the publication notice so that we can get approval to set the public hearing at the next meeting. Then the public hearing would occur at the second meeting in January and you'd have the opportunity to adopt the, the moratorium at that time.
So, then is there a time on it or?
Then it, you could set it for a twelve-month period.
That's the man, but then you can stop it.
But as was mentioned, once you adopt your regulations, the moratorium is lifted, so.
I understand.
And then that way, we would have proper notice for this issue on the agenda.
And to be honest, a quicker moratorium would actually be, provide more, uh, direction for landowners who want to seek these different things because they will have time before the transmission line goes in to understand what Meeker can, is doing, how they can apply it. So, if we delayed it, would it actually be more of a delay than, than establishing it sooner?
And, and also in relation to what you're saying, that would allow them to come to the public meeting.
Yeah.
Give them an opportunity to voice their concerns.
Because I'd rather hear it because I might be on one-way side, uh, not understanding the, the, the positive impacts that you can have for that versus, you know, where I come from as a person, which is, all of us are different.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm not hearing any objection to that direction, so we're going forward.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, Greg. County auditor, Barb Black.
Do we have to recess or do we not?
Uh, we will recess as county board and convene as county ditch authority for.
Good morning.
Our county auditor.
As, I didn't want to have to do, but I'm here to ask for a few loans again so that our.
My gosh, you just paid us back. Indian giver.
Yeah, you're back again.
Oh, my gosh. So sorry.
I've been asking for money back, we paid too much because I was anticipating the, um.
You know, I haven't read my no-befores for a while.
I know, and I didn't mean it that way, so that was politically not correct.
It's a diversion tactic, Beth.
Never mind. We move on.
She missed it, darn it.
Am I right?
Trying to help you out.
So, before you, I am requesting a few more loans. Um, we analyze the amount of dollars coming in and it's in anticipation of not having enough to, um, have a positive balance in these accounts at year-end. And before you'd ask for loans to be, um, made in the, to the tune of forty-five thousand five hundred. To best comment, um.
No, not to my comment.
In joint fifty-two, when you see that one on there, I'm, I actually overpaid. When I looked at, uh, the bill that came in that I wasn't aware of along with paying back too much interest or paying, paying back the loan, I have to go back two thousand or I have that one in the red and that would be embarrassing. So, um, that's what's before you.
Didn't, I thought we paid off fifteen and seventeen.
We have, um, paid off a few.
Is this, is this new?
Correct. So, what happens, and I think I've explained this before, it's really hard when we send out the bills and we sent them out to, um, only four percent are going directly to the, uh, tax statement, so they're not aware that they have a bill because it's a hundred dollars or less. They have an option to pay and we allow that through December thirty-first or we allow them to apply that to be paid into some of their taxes. So, that forces me out to May and most of them November because they are eggland and eggland doesn't pay till November. Then we have a number of them like fifty-two that's on a ten-year payment plan or a number of them like the one Paul bringing up with, um, seventeen, where we allow two years or three years of payment. As I schedule those, it's very difficult. Yes, I have equity coming, but I don't have it. And we all know that when you've got a checkbook in the red, you can do something about it. And so, that's what I'm doing. And the auditors prefer, and I know we've had findings before and I try to be really diligent on it, so that I have a positive cash balance year-end. I have a positive equity balance, but not positive cash because I haven't got that much money in hand. That's why we analyze this carefully and the numbers are small, but we just couldn't make the receipts match that. Could get a, wouldn't fall today and be embarrassed that I did it, but you know, I can't look forward.
Right.
Mr. Chair, move to approve transferring funds from revenue to ditch in the amount of forty-five-five and apply three percent interest on repayment of these loans.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifel buying. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. And I sign these if you want to take them on your way as well. Yeah, I think so.
Did you check on that five thousand dollar bill?
Yes, I have, it, it's, um.
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
I was going to mention it during my report, but I'll talk about it.
That's fine, you can do that. We'll move on. I just wanted to make sure.
I was just going to say, it, it's expenses that go back to, uh, May. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollars per trip and there's a number of trips.
Well, who's, what is it for though?
It's for hauling cardboard from, there's a cardboard dumpster that we collect at the, the landfill and then gets taken.
The one that's always overflowing that I hear complaints about?
I don't know if it's overflowing or not, but possibly that is.
I mean, that's the one reason, what?
It's the one next to it that you're.
I'm just asking if that's where the issue's been. I'm having a struggle enough here now.
Uh, based on the timelines on the bills here, it looks like it comes in, they pick up dumpsters every two weeks.
Who picks it up?
McCarthy gravel.
And I, I can, well, McCarthy's tend to delay billing, is the way I'll say. But in a good way, I mean, they're, they're good folks. Uh, I need to adjourn as county ditch authority and reconvene as a county board and get Mikel up here.
Mikel Johnson, human resources coordinator. The first thing I have before you is approval of the David Drown Associates proposal to perform ongoing compensation maintenance. So, in two thousand twenty-two, we had DDA, so Drown Associates. Um, we had them come and do a, um, compensation study. And we found that doing those processes is very helpful, especially in the market that we're seeing right now as far as recruiting and retention and, and wages and how much those have been changing, um, with the current market. So, um, we also found that very valuable for union, union negotiations as well so that we could come in with that information, um, and, and work together with the unions to negotiate wages. Uh, so, we have been talking about doing the ongoing maintenance as well. And so, that's already been included in the budget for two thousand twenty-four. It is fifteen thousand dollars. And what they do is they come in each year and they reevaluate a third of our positions. The goal for that is that they then, that we don't have to make a large adjustment, adjustment then. We're doing that ongoing maintenance, so hopefully we just have small adjustments that we have to make each year instead of big, um, adjustments that make a larger impact on the budget. Uh, so, they provided us with the included proposal and, um, that is what I'm requesting for approval today.
When they did our last one, what was the grand total for that?
I believe it was seventeen thousand five hundred.
I was going to say eighteen is what I was, I thought we, that we estimated our maintenance to be about eighteen thousand, what I.
Yeah, the ongoing maintenance, we, we estimated being at fifteen and which is what the proposal was. The last one was about seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand. This is more in-depth than the work that they did before because last time they didn't do job description reviews and recommendations and classification. Um, and, but being the fact that they're splitting it over three-year takes what would be a forty-five thousand dollar cost to do all that work, it's fifteen thousand a year.
All right.
So, are, are our job descriptions and compensation for positions now up to speed? Do we feel we're competitive with our neighbors and that we have, um, corrected any issues within our job descriptions and so now everybody is?
Not the county attorney because I just got a forty percent increase on our county attorney, so just saying we're a little off on her yet. It's ongoing, right?
And, and county commissioner wages, we could get into all of that.
Commissioner Brevison, I would say that we're in a good place, but it's a moving target. Um, you know, as we, as we know, you know, jobs evolve over time and don't always get reflected in the job description. And so, it's important that we're regularly looking at this and this provides us with a framework to be regularly reviewing these without someone having to come forward and be the squeaky wheel and say, hey, my job has changed a lot, I need to take a look at this. Additionally, by doing this process, we can ensure that we're staying on top of market changes rather than coming in every five years and having to spend X number of dollars. It's hopefully X minus Y number of dollars to be able to.
I think the answer is no.
So, is that what we did? Nothing had been done for five years and then all of a sudden?
Well, when we did this, remember when we did the, how many years ago we did this initially?
We did, we did a big compensation classification study in twenty eighteen.
And then we decided we do this maintenance so we didn't have to go back and do it again.
And then we did the, we did just a market study in twenty twenty-two. Did not take a look at every job description in twenty twenty-two. We just did, how do our positions compare to the market?
And then in twenty-two is when we adopted the maintenance.
That's when we said that we were going to start moving forward.
Because we did one in eighteen and we had done one in maybe five.
It had been many years before two thousand eighteen.
Well, I was here when we did the first one.
Okay.
So, the last one was twenty eighteen?
And as Mikel said, it's a huge advantage for us to do this dealing with the, uh, unions. And actually, it's a huge morale boost for non-union people. That they understand that we are looking at it and we're trying to rectify problems if they come up.
Every third year, your wage gets looked at, a hundred percent of the county is looked at every third year. And then it also helps us, if there is a spot, we can make adjustments outside of that, um, scope of the ones that were studied, but it helps identify some of them to the outliers, if you will. So, then the next time around, that one might not need to be adjusted much or if at all, so. So, it's just, it's been very helpful, helps streamline negotiations.
Yeah, it did.
Takes some arguments, uh.
So, this was the company that we hired a year ago. We made all the adjustments, that's all been taken care of. Now, this is going to be a contract where we pay them fifteen thousand a year for the next three years to maintain this look upon all of the job descriptions and the wage.
Correct, I, I would have to take a closer look at the actual contract to see if it actually locks us in for three years. Um, I know that the initial fifteen is just for this next year. I know it's recommended that it, we do, would do a three-year, um, because then obviously if we only did one year and one-third of the, the folks that we have, you know, if we don't keep going with it. So, it'd be recommended that we would do the full three years.
And this is a budget item.
Yes, it is.
But what we're voting on today then is for a one-year track or for three?
It's for one year, I believe.
Yes.
Because there's no, no date in here.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the David Drown Associates proposal to perform ongoing compen- compensation maintenance.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifel buying. Is there any further discussion or question?
Do we need to put a date or a time limit on here?
It's, it's, uh.
The, the contract will be for one year, we'll be back next year to approve.
All right, uh, hearing no other further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next, Mikel, personnel policies?
Yeah, so the next thing is to update the, um, Meeker County personnel policies. There's a lot of red lines in these policies because there's a lot of changes that have occurred over this past year, uh, because of legislation. So, I do have a PowerPoint for you here with those. Um, I apologize that my PowerPoint doesn't completely match your RBA because I had to put ones together that would fit on a slide, so. Um, so, the first one is to update the promotion, transfer and demotion policy. Basically, it's just updating some language on there to better align with the pay-for-performance language. So, there was some older language in there that still referred to steps and not all employees have steps anymore if they're on the pay-for-performance system. So, it's just, just some small language change there. The next one is the working conditions and hours policy, so emergency, closing and other emergency procedures. So, that adds language to be more clear and consistent with vacation and telecommuting policies regarding weather closures. Um, and, and gives more flexibility that if people are able to work from home during that time that they should. Um, and then if they are not able to come in, that they should be using their vacation time. Uh, then there's also the safety and drug and alcohol use. Uh, what that did was I just took that out of the policies and added. the policies and added them to the appendix instead. They refer to those policies, but those policies weren't in there. So what I did is I just took those out, put the actual policies in the back so that we have um those full policies in there. So not really changes to the actual policies themselves, but just making it more efficient and clear. Employees benefit, employee benefits policy. Um, so this would add for holiday eligibility. This would add language to provide time and a half for non-exempt employees who perform county work on a holiday. Um, generally, that's not something that we um encourage, but sometimes it just happens that an employee has to do some sort of county work on a holiday. They do need supervisory approval to do so. Uh, so this would add that if they work on that holiday, they would get time and a half for working on that holiday. It also adds language that an exempt employee who performs work, work on a holiday would also get uh compensatory time for that um work as well. Again, not something that we encourage them to do. We want them to take their holidays, but sometimes things happen and people have to come in. And so we wanna be able to show that appreciation that they're working on that holiday.
Does this read differently from like our snowplow guys?
So it's, yeah, so that would be a different circumstance, yes.
Deputies.
Yeah.
Cause they generally, all those folks are gonna have the contract language, not the snowplow, cause they're not contract. But deputies are gonna have the, the union contract language already that they would be going off of, yes. Uh, the next one is school conference and activities leave. This just adds language to include the statute so we can refer and be more specific in that way. The next two are changes due to legislation this year. So nursing mothers leave. There used to be a part in there that they had to have worked for us for so long and worked for us for so many hours. And with legislative changes this year, that piece was removed. So this, that's updating our language to follow that. Uh, the other thing that updated in legislation is that the language for the statute um made it clear that the room that we provide for expressing milk must be clean, private and secure. Uh, then there's the Minnesota Pregnancy and Parenting. This is also a legislative change. Moves the uh language from FMLA. It was in there in our policies and it, it wasn't in the correct spot. So I just moved it and then I added language to comply with the legislation, which is that um, they don't have to work for us for a certain amount of time either. The now, the next one is uh sick and vacation. So this is to add language to pro- to comply with the new earn sick and save time. Uh, so this adds that the first eighty hours of vacation and or sick leave used by an employee will be designated as protected time in accordance with the statute. And that would also run concurrently with the first eighty hours used each year. Um, so it would be both that they're taking that time and that it also is designated as protected time under the statute. Uh, it clarifies that a year for purposes of um the protected time starts on Jan. Oh, we changed this. It should be January first, sorry about that. Um, so it'd be January first, twelve-month calendar year accrual. It adds language that seasonal employees, temporary employees and paid interns will earn uh the earn sick and safe time as well. So it'd be an hour of sick time for every thirty hours worked, as long as they're expected to work at least eighty hours within the year. And then adds language to expand the definition of family member for sick use. And it adds language to expand the reasons an employee may use sick time. And it updates that the HR coordinator can require a doctor's certification um versus the department head as we wanna make sure that uh in, in medical information is kept confidential. So this is all some of the things that we discussed during the work session previously. Uh, communicable disease prevention and management policy. There's just a very minor update in language in there to be more clear about um the time that they can use. Uh, so that's just a very minor update. Uh, and then the reimbursement of travel-related expenses policy. So this changes our meal allotment piece of this. This is something that we've been getting a lot of feedback from employees uh that they would, they would hope, like to see this change. So the amounts for the meal, meal reimbursement that is allowed to employees has probably not been changed in quite a few years. It hasn't been changed since I've been here, so I don't know before that if it was changed at all. Uh, and and as we all know, unfortunately, meals are just getting more and more expensive everywhere we go. So this would update that policy that breakfast would go from ten dollars to thirteen. Lunch would go from twelve dollars to fifteen and dinner would go from eighteen dollars to twenty-six. And that the full allotment for a day, if they combine everything together, are from forty to fifty-four dollars. And this would also change that if someone is in travel status outside of Meeker County and there's a chart in there that shows during which times um that they could get meal reimbursement and that it's not only for overnight expenses. The tough part is, is when we have employees that are traveling to meetings for work outside of the county. Right now, they're currently not able to get reimbursed for lunch. So if they're gone during the day. Um, for instance, I go to an HR meeting in Redwood. If I'm gone that whole morning and then I'm not gonna get back to the county until two-thirty. Right now, as the policy states, I don't have a way to get that reimbursed. I have to pay that out of my own pocket. So um this is something that other employees have been requesting um for a while as well. So it would increase that amount and then it would change that it doesn't have to just be for overnight stay.
So what if I leave the house at seven o'clock and I have to, and I have breakfast? Are you gonna pay for that or should I have breakfast before I leave the house?
So the way that we have it written is um breakfast would be a meal prior to ten-thirty. Um, and that it can be claimed if an employee is in travel status, which means outside of the county and traveling. Um, be, and they have to leave home before six AM.
So I don't have to have breakfast before I leave the house? We had, this has been a huge discussion on some boards I'm on because it's kinda.
I think you missed the eye that.
You used seven o'clock. She made it clear you had to be in travel status by six.
So we, so we do have to, so, so if they're traveling before six, we're paying for their breakfast or after.
If someone was leaving five in the morning, then yes, potentially.
Okay.
And so then lunch would be um considered a meal between ten-thirty-one and four-thirty. And that would be claimed if the event starts prior to lunch and continues after lunch and the employee is in travel status. And then dinner is a meal after four-thirty-one and the employee cannot return home after, until after seven o'clock and is in travel status.
Okay.
And they keep their receipts in our, it's a reimbursement situation?
No, and if we've paid for something and there's a meal provided at a meeting, they can't put it for lunch.
Can't claim it for that.
Yep.
Yep. And then, like I said before, there is an appendix that's been added and that just includes um those safety policies and that um earn sick and safe time notice that we are required to have in our handbook. So those are the changes that I have for you.
Alright.
I move to approve the updated Meeker County Personnel Policies.
I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg on the Personnel Policies.
I'll second that.
And the second by Commissioner Bredeis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the Class and Comp Committee.
Okay, so the next thing I have for you is approval of the class, the DBM classifications as recommended by the Class and Comp Committee. Uh, so there are several that are included here. So the first one is the Property Records Taxation and Elections Manager. So this is a discussion that we've had about um the Auditor and Recorder's Office. So this would merge the current duties of the recorder with the current duties of the auditor to create that Property Records Taxation and Elections Office. So this position has been recommended to be classified as a DBM of C fifty-two. The next one is the Property Record Specialist. And this job also aligns with that discussion of the, the county recorder and auditor um office as well. So this would be reorganizing the three current full-time positions into Property Record Specialist positions. It would allow for greater collaboration and efficiency throughout the office, including cross-training of the duties. And so the recommendation is that this position remains at the current rating of DBMB twenty-three. However, then it would change that all of the staff, all three of those staff would all be at that same level. The next one is the Public Health Supervisor. And so this job description was updated to ensure it was correct for the merge of the Social Services and Public Health uh departments into Health and Human Services. And upon reviewal of this position and with also looking at the Social Services Supervisors and how those co- collab- uh correlate. Uh, the recommendation is to have this position be classified as a D sixty-one. I know that right now my uh RBA for the board did say C fifty-two previously. However, we realized that the Social Services Supervisors were moving to D sixty-one and that we hadn't included that in this decision. So we wanna make sure that um it is D sixty-one to be um clear across of those positions. The next one is the Health and Human Services Deputy Director. So this job description replaces the Public Health Director and aligns with the organizational vision for that merge of the Health and Human Services. And the uh due to the level of decision-making along with the number of programs and staff, this position oversees. The recommendation for this position would be DBMD sixty-two. And finally, the last one is the Health and Human Services Director. So this updates our current Social Services Director job description and aligns with that vision for the merge into the Health and Human Services. So the recommendation for this position is to keep this position at the DBME eighty-two. But it is to increase the salary range, so the overall range for this position by two percent. Similar to the range increase that we recently just did for the um county highway positions. So this would be taking the three percent COLA for two thousand twenty-four and the two percent range adjustment. So overall, the, the total range of this position would increase um by that five percent. That is what I have for you today.
So we're eliminating one position downstairs?
Yes.
I'm a little confused on this. I should have called.
That's accurate.
So we're not replacing, we're not gonna try to say this.
Correct.
Say this right now. Instead of an auditor and recorder, it's a whatever, an auditor specialist or whatever you call that, auditor extraordinary.
Yes.
That.
Yes, yes.
That is gonna be a five percent salary increase?
On the uh the manager position, I believe that's approximately what it is. I'd have to double check, but it's close to that.
Class and Comp?
The, the range is adjusting by that amount.
The range is what?
Range is adjusting by that amount.
Yeah, I don't understand all these numbers. I mean, it means nothing to me, but if I hear a percentage.
The chart, the, the chart of, you know, it kinda tells what we're.
Right.
The changes and show the flows a little easier.
I saw that.
The public health. Public Health Director Diane, um, what DBM level was that position at previously?
D sixty-two.
No, I believe it's D sixty-one.
So that, now it's gonna be sick.
I think you're right. I'm a sick.
So she was the Public Health Director.
Sixty-two.
Yeah.
Now it's going to be called a deputy. So it'll be Paul is at the top and then this deputy will be the next one. So, but that's a new creation, right? This deputy position is a new creation?
Well.
Yes and no. I mean, we have the, the Public Health Director, so it's replacing that position, but it is a new position in itself, yes.
Okay. It's kinda replacing Diane, right? It's totally replacing Diane with Paul being the supervisor. So it's a very different. Deputy Director or is there another one? I get a little lost in here.
Say that again?
So it's gonna be Paul and then a deputy director and then?
And then the supervisors are, well, the, the deputy, if you look at the org chart that's included in the packet, the deputy director doesn't have formal supervision authority over the supervisors. It's more of an informal authority, but it provides that additional level of support.
Yeah. So the deputy director, is that gonna be solely public health stuff or no?
No, it's not.
Alright.
I kinda look at it like sheriff and then we have a deputy sheriff, right? Chief dip. And then, then there's the next row of folks. Okay.
Yeah, then you gotta eat. Human services supervisor.
Yep.
And then family health and WICD and that'll fall under one of them categories.
So we're not looking to get somebody necessarily with public health background for the deputy director?
We're.
Well, according to the job description.
They don't necessarily have to have a public health background.
Okay, thank you.
They may, but they may not.
And I like Paul and Diane, well, Paul and Diane are both in the Class and Comp meeting to kinda help us walk through the logistics of the. How long were you guys working on this? You guys have been working on this for a long time over?
A few years.
So I mean, it's uh, there's been a lot, I think, goodbye in between uh, between the departments and the, and the process and.
Yeah, not to speak for Diane, I think we've really worked pretty well together on, on how we arrived where we're at. And with the understanding of what we're intending to do with the positions, particularly at the upper level. This whole process started on a ground level. Um, and then this is kind of the last piece of that process and we're trying to ensure that we're supporting that ground level functioning with these upper level positions. We don't wanna lose sight of what we're really been working to gain as far as our partnerships with our staff. One of the things that we've recognized over COVID is that um our staff do well when they have adequate supervision and engagement with leadership. Um, and we believe that that's the same situation for our supervisory staff to ensure that there is adequate um supervision and leadership access as well as ensuring that we're looking outside of our agency to start influencing some of those outside dynamics like we've talked about earlier today and you've heard where, you know, we need to be strong internally, but we also need to be able to influence those external forces to better assist us in serving our constituency. And that's where we came up with this structure.
Okay. What I see is we're merging the recorder and the auditor office together. So the one elected position is gone. And then that will be under one person now with this new job title, Records, Taxation, Elections. And then the three individuals underneath, which we currently have, are all going to be of the same um job description.
B twenty.
The same level.
That's accurate, yeah.
That's what I see there.
As we talked about a couple meetings ago, when we, when we talked about this reorganization, we, Barb has worked with the team to shift duties between each of the different positions, pulling some of what were the recorders duties into those uh uh record specialist positions, but also some of them are, are sitting with the manager position. Some of the things that Barb was doing is being split between the other ones. And so it's a really a realignment to right-size the duties between all the different positions.
They can all help one another. And then this position, of course, we're creating the deputy director. That to me is a new, is a new position.
Went through Personnel though. Julie, you and I discussed that with Mikel and Andrew and so forth.
Yep. That's the new one. I like charts.
I hate them. Let's move on.
I like charts.
Mister Chair.
I mean, I dislike them.
Move to approve the DBM classifications as recommended by the CNC Committee for the positions of Property Records, Taxation, Elections Manager, Property Records Specialist, Public Health Supervisor, Health and Human Services Deputy Director and Health Human Services Director. Move to appoint Barbara, do I do it all in one motion?
You could, you could do it all.
Okay, move to appoint Barbara Locke to the position of Property Records Taxation Elections Manager, of which the position is inclusive of the statutory responsibilities of the county auditor and county recorder effectively January one, twenty twenty-four. Also moved to appoint Paul Bukovich to the position of Health and Human Services Director effective January one, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion with only three breaths by Commissioner Shifel buying. Make the uh approve the uh recommendations, Class and Comp. Go here a second.
I'll second that.
I have a second. I have a second by Commissioner Bredesen. Uh any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mikel.
Thank you.
Break time. It'll take five.
Get some coffee.
And old Beth got some.
I've still gotta do something.
I'm so good at that usually.
Alright. We'll get back to, back to business here. Um Andrew, County Administrator.
Yes, Mister Chair. We have uh various vacancies coming up on uh different committees and we have applications for those and so we'll go through these uh committee by committee. So first off, we have four vacancies on the Inquadic Invasive Species Committee, five applications, three of them have applied for reappointment. You have the applications in your package.
Alright, who's uh what's this board want to do with AIS here?
Well, two of our applicants live on the same lake and as an AIS committee, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, we have tried to not have two folks from the same lake on there. That would be David Hall and Ron Graham. Or Bruce, I'm sorry.
And where is Mindy?
Uh she's on Painesville, Cronus.
Oh, that's right. I read that one.
I think she listed it on the tab.
She's not on the lake. She lives between, yeah, yeah.
But I thought her application said something about Lake.
She's a member of the Lake Cronus Lake Association.
Yeah.
Her permanent residence is near Lake Ripley, one of the three congregations serve, has Lake Ripley property on its minute.
Alright, well, AIS committee, you guys got the.
Well, if we have two from Ripley and two from Clear Lake, we have a clear problem avoiding appointing two from the same lake. So I don't know what to say there.
I would like to see Mindy, Ron, Kristen and Mike. Those are the four that I would propose to move forward with.
And Cindy, if she is a part of Lake Cronus, she's probably gonna be more or less representing. Cindy?
Mindy.
Mindy.
Why did, I got her, I got a terrible name.
So so all of these people are from two different, out of all four of them, there's just two different lakes? You won't know the difference. She's from Stella, Mike is from.
Ripley.
Mindy is from.
Kristen is on.
She has a Cronus Cronus connection.
And Ron and Bruce are on the same lake?
Clear Lake. They're both from Clear Lake.
I would tend to agree with what Julie said, that's a good grouping.
Is that a second then or did you make a motion?
You have to do it all at one?
If we can do that.
Andrew, or how do we do that?
What I would say, maybe take it committee by committee, you could do motions by committee.
Yeah, I'd do, let's do this one.
Well, I would propose Mindy, Ron, Kristen and Mike as the four representatives for the AIS committee.
And that's a motion.
Please.
Alright, motion and a second by Commissioner Johnson. Uh any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of those four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
You have one vacancy on the Board of Adjustments and uh one applicant for reappointment.
I would move to reappoint Kim Hempel to the Board of Adjustment.
I would second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, Johnson, like second by Commissioner Olberg. Uh is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Extension is the same, right?
Yeah, we have two vacancies on the Extension Committee, um two applicants, neither of which are reappointments.
And I I would just point out Matt Johnson applied last time. I think we had three for two vacancies and they were all three very good. And uh Matt, I mean, will do excellent. So I just, I'm glad he reapplied.
I make a motion to uh appoint Matthew Johnson and Leon Lund to extension.
I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg and a second by uh Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
And then lastly, you have two vacancies on the Planning Commission and two applicants for reappointment, but three applicants total.
Can I jump in here? Do you need a requ- is there a requirement for one member to be on the Board of Adjustment to also be on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
So Kim Hempel is on the Board of Adjustment?
So she needs to stay on.
Yeah.
Essentially.
And she is a good member.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Kim Hempel and John Smith onto the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shifey and second by Commissioner Bredesen uh for reappointment of Kimberly Hempel and John Smith to the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion?
So the Sean guy, I can't pronounce his last name.
Oh, come on, try.
I'm not in enough trouble today.
I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Well, he seems like he's got a lot of good experience.
He has quite a resume.
He has a good resume, so.
I know. It's too bad there's not three openings because I looked at that as well and thought he would be a.
How long has he lived to?
I don't know.
Three, four years.
That was mentioned, but.
Yeah, his experience level is good. And he put forth that uh some effort into his application.
Alright. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Did you get a second?
Yeah, yes.
We had the.
Danny and Julie seconded.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
That is it.
That's it on that. Alright. Uh next up is the Administrator's Report.
Yes, just very brief today, um that offices are gonna be closed in observance of Christmas next Monday and then January first, an observance of New Year's Day. We are not going to have a work session next week.
We're not?
No.
Hey, let's start the calendar.
Oh, I can stay at my.
Unless unless you would like to come in and talk, we can.
Bring more brownies.
That's probably better if I, if I don't.
And then Mister Chair, that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. Committee updates. Going for Julie's got.
I'm always ready.
Give her the gas.
I'm always ready.
John Potter.
Okay. Our last committee reports were given just a week and a half ago on Thursday, the seventh of December. Since our last meeting, I've attended three Christmas parties, one basketball game, a dance recital, two Sunday School pageants, a zoning and planning meeting, three Christmas coffee luncheons, I babysat my grandkids for three days, baked multiple loaves of bread and completed my Christmas card and gift list and we still have.
Inventory on how many cards you've received.
Well, and then I do have a couple here that I'd be willing to share with you, but um I I don't wanna brag. And then I had a bag of others here, Christmas cards, but you can look at those later.
Whenever.
Okay. I just wanna wish very merry Christmas to all my colleagues who serve Meeker County and to our wonderful residents of Meeker County. And let's all have some more treats and that concludes my report.
Do you put DBMs in for the babysitting?
I do not. Those are just hugs and kisses.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, yes.
Next up, Beth, you wanna go?
I can. I forgot my notes on.
I can. Or not, I mean, I just.
Or not.
Just so you know, I I I somehow misplaced my notes on Prime West. I was gonna say what I can remember, but so we had hospital finance, um and we kinda discussed that today. Um I was, went over the budget. We're trying to get our swing bed numbers up. Um our goal is four fifty. We have, we were up to four hundred. That's a, that's a good thing for our hospital and we can do swing bed. We have the capability of doing that of keeping people in between who don't have to go into nursing homes, so um are, we're working well on that.
Do they have a time limit on that?
There's so many days, but I don't pin me down on how many, cause I'm not sure.
Has to do with Medicare or something?
Has to do with Medicare, of course, they control the world, so. So the sh- I had a shelter meeting. We're tr- we're trying to do some fundraising. Um I'm gonna say the same story as I do every month. The shelters are all full. People are dumping animals
Oh.
And just dumping them. And of course, the shelters ending up with them because of COVID when everybody adopted a dog or decided they should breed dogs. So we are gonna be running at a huge deficit. I mean, not as big as we thought, but we are definitely gonna be at a deficit. So we're trying to work on some more fundraising. We have the respiratory uh thing going on with the dogs right now on the floors, so we having to do some separation and stuff. We're gonna be doing an online auction for Save Our Tails. Um and it's called, let Lori know this, Paul, thirty-two auctions. He's a great customer for. I'll be fine. So I'll let you all know. I'll let you all know when that is and if you would go on and bid on something, I would very much appreciate it.
Nice.
Um Prime West, nothing stands out. They're doing, and Paul's, I forgot my notes. I will say, we did have a discussion about the Southwest Consortium money, which they're gonna do, but they're not gonna do it again. Because, I mean, they can do it, but it runs into some legality of, and here's the fact of the matter, Prime West is not a bank. We're here for county health purchase rate. And um so I I everybody, there was how many commissioners who actually served on the Southwest?
Well, there was uh fourteen that could not vote.
Right, so I had to abstain also. But so I'm sure the word has gotten back to everyone. We hadn't heard any more after the Friday meeting. So that was fine. Um I'm also thinking that should there be a commissioner that serves on that board? Cause it seems as though there are commissioners from those counties on that board. So that might be something.
You was a board to.
Corky, for instance, thinks it's important for commissioners to get more involved and maybe it is, or maybe that's a discussion with Paul Bukovich or you to have with other administrators or whatever, so. I also had um a hospital board meeting yesterday and a lot of the discussion was, I'm not gonna repeat it, it's pretty much what we did today. There was a representative there from Apple Valley who got to hear some because it's important that some legislation change. One of the parts that concerns me for us also is when you get the wrong payer mix in a hospital, too much Medicare and Medicaid and not enough private pay, that's when you really head for trouble. And our percentages are growing in that area because we have an elderly community and probably more Medicaid. So that really has to be addressed on the pay and stuff. So that's more things that they're working on. I also had a Central Minnesota Jobs and Training uh meeting and I'm just gonna read a statement from there. The Joint Powers Board for the Central Minnesota Jobs and Training Services Career Force System has been meeting lately to address some administrative personnel and financial issues. I anticipate we will have additional information soon to update the County Board of Commissioners from the eleven Minnesota counties that make up this Joint Powers Board. That's all I have.
Thanks, Beth. Paul?
Well, Prime West, something you're gonna be hearing a lot about in the past, uh you know, we're in a lawsuit with DHS over county-based purchasing, but they are working on a new model. It is called Karma, County Administrative Rural Medical Assistance.
You wrote that down, cause you couldn't remember during the meeting.
Karma with a C.
Karma with a C.
And it seems to have some traction because DHS has bought into this so far. Uh and matter of fact, it's gonna have the bill ready to go, um so it'll be included as a part of the budget.
Hopefully eliminate the the problems that we have every couple years.
Yeah. In our lawsuit, um the um Supreme Court of Minnesota has decided to hear it. Um we anticipate them hearing it probably in June. Brief, the briefs will be filed by March and they will hear it at a later date. So we don't really know what the outcome is on that. Total cash balances of the end of October at Prime West is one hundred and forty-six point five million. It has increased by forty-two point nine million for the year from one oh three point six million at the end of twenty twenty-two. Once again, I remind you, this is our company. We we are one of twenty-four owners. Now, I was approached by another commissioner to ask Beth, what's the endgame? What are we gonna do? Just keep building cash? Can't we give it back to the counties as a dividend? Well, by state statute, we cannot be given any money back because that would give the appearance of a dividend. So that was clearly made to everybody, wasn't it, at that last meeting?
But what we can do is what we're doing.
Yes.
Putting money, the community reinvestment funds.
Grants.
And we can raise that and and bear in mind that.
And lower agreement or.
This is Prime West, not not Prime Health.
Not Prime Health.
And I don't have my copy, but how many, what did they give away?
Well, total giveaway was over ten million dollars.
And a local, I mean.
Yes.
Woodland got so, that's how they can do it, but they're bound by a lot of legality, so they can't do that.
How'd they make so much this year? What was that on?
Because claims were so much lower.
Forty-two million dollars?
DHS pay pays a flat amount for each person enrolled, correct? Per month. But our expenses were so much less.
Well, and cause as I said earlier, people aren't going in like they should. But now this could come back and bite you at it. It's like uh we've talked about before, when they come in, they're sicker. You can have a claim with a new baby or something that costs. But it's, and also their investments are doing very well, Danny, like everybody else. I mean, when you have that much money you can put into, you know, they do that weekend thing and they make.
This is the organization that does that.
Sweep, yeah, they do that sweep and they make.
Still has probably thirty-two million, not county investments, if you call it ten percent. So it's still pretty good.
It's very good.
I mean, for how many members is there?
Um we have twenty-four counties and I don't know what the current grand total enrollment is.
I don't. We always get that. It would be interesting for you to see that. Maybe we should do a work session on that sometime, maybe this spring.
Um we have a fantastic CEO.
We have very good staff.
Bella is a master.
He's the same guy for Prime Health too?
He's involved in Prime Health as well.
Involved, it's Matt.
Matt is the one that.
Matt's the Member Services Director. Matt works with us most closely, but I think Jim is, well, no, Jim is involved.
Jim was the architect, right?
I can't remember exactly what.
Wasn't Jim the architect?
Oh, sure. He came to the meetings and stuff before we started it.
Gotcha, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he he was the original CEO that you hired, right?
I was, he was there when I came.
Okay.
But when we started talking about Prime Health, he was.
Beth wanted the other guy.
I are you, I'm not in enough. Apologize. I couldn't help it. For everything. It it is, it is.
Work.
It is a, it is a great organization and it just proves to you that county-based purchasing. Now, let, you know, let me remind you, the private HMOs and stuff are putting up big buildings and they're doing all those things and we're not. Our administrative is a lot less, so it proves to you that county-based purchasing works as much as people wanna say it doesn't, so.
Well, because I think it makes other entities a little bit of a black eye.
Absolutely, you're absolutely right, Steve.
And make no mistake about it, we're taking money out of Blue Cross's pocket, Alina and all the other health.
You're kicking some big chin.
And so they're part of that lawsuit.
And they're doing more things to address populations, dental, there's just things that they're willing to do that you're not gonna get elsewhere. They just fit with our rural counties.
Yep.
They really do versus.
Absolutely. Good.
So then, uh I don't know about any of, did anybody get onto the MCIT cybersecurity?
I was not able to make it.
I couldn't get in. I tried and tried and tried and couldn't get in. So I don't know what was going on there, so I did not.
Cybersecurity was too good.
It was working perfect, man.
I actually couldn't get into a team meeting the other day either, so I think it might be something, is that something on our end, Andrew?
I don't know.
Hmm.
I'm gonna check with Rob before I leave today or somebody.
Um and then we had a CPT meeting on Monday. Things are just so much better, uh going along a lot smoother. Our cash is is stable. Um I believe that the entire environment there has stabilized. Which is good because no likelihood that I will be the chair next year and I didn't wanna walk into.
But I think you said it's stabilized, but not because of the personnel change so much as just, right, we're not blaming.
Paulsy, Paulsy.
It's what he, well, what, what he walked into, right? Am I saying that right?
It it just kind of, you know, one thing creates another and another and another and you're just going in a vicious circle. But I think maybe now we can finally say that circle has stopped. We've got, or at least got it paused. And we're in good position. We have the right key people in place. We are gonna be looking at, as soon as we establish, what we need to keep on hand, we'll probably do a. What we need to keep on hand, we'll probably do a county payback, um, so.
They can do a dividend.
Yes, we call it dividend, yeah.
Yeah, I always wonder, we talk about that at Supporting Hands, but then I always wonder if what you're getting back really, could you use it? In other ways, better for the small amount you might get back, that's, it's always nice to get money back, don't get me wrong, but.
Yep, and then thank, uh, finally, I'd like to thank the citizens of the third district of Meker County who elected me to serve on this. It is a great pleasure to serve with you four and, uh, I'd like to thank our board chair for his past year's service to us. This is your last meeting, buddy. Well, no, you start the next one, don't you?
I started. He starts the next one.
Yeah.
Hand over to him.
Passes the gavel.
Pass the sash.
I can sense their excitement.
No comment.
District four, building.
Yeah, building, something's building anyway. Might be what I hear. So I guess that goes to committee.
Roll your eyes at. Randy, roll your eyes at him now. Thank you.
Uh, I just had the, uh, one meeting, I went to planning and zoning, it was a little more livelier than I thought it would be. And besides that, I think we have a Woodlands meeting later this week, right, Elizabeth?
I believe so, I haven't gotten a.
Yeah, I think so, I'm Johnny in the spot on that one this time. And then most of planning and zoning, I think we covered, what's that?
Don't you like me anymore, you've been remoting into that.
I don't know, but he just called you Elizabeth and that's why I'm worried.
It passes right over my head. He does that now.
He's gonna tell you how many Christmas cards he got here in a moment.
Yeah, I could, they're all right here.
I could've brought some in my bag.
Include family, yeah. So, and then planning and zoning, I think we covered that pretty well already, so, I mean, it was basically that discussion, trying to figure out solar and. The wind letter and stuff, so, but that's it.
Alright, thank you, and I, uh, I actually had an off week last week, so with AMC and then the Thursday board meeting and I didn't have any meetings last week. And I had Grove City, I had Grove City Care last night, I couldn't get there, so I went out of that one, so. I don't have anything, uh, to update as far as meetings to go.
How many Christmas parties have you been to, basketball game?
I went, I was at Trinity Lutheran Santa Fire thing the other night.
There's been a lot of that.
Can't remember what day that was, Sunday night or.
You say Trinity Catholic?
And then.
There's no such thing as a Trinity Catholic.
Train, Canterbury Valley, we had all day train, that was last Wednesday, the thirteenth, so, stuff going on, obviously, but.
Lots of fun things.
Yeah, so.
And we had Lily's birthday on Sunday, right?
On Monday, yeah, she had her birthday party on Sunday this last week, last Monday was her sixth birthday.
Oh, wow, that was a joyful event for her then, huh?
It certainly, she got more presents than can be.
I just figured the crabby dad who is sick.
Normally, December birthdays are, are jipped.
I got, I got one coming up in a week, yeah.
December birthdays, you usually get jipped on.
You get the duel.
You get cheated on of money.
My granddaughter's the day after Christmas.
Right?
Yeah.
Cause you're December.
Yes, my, my daughter's best friend's birthday's on Christmas Day.
Oh.
Oh, my girlfriend's is on Christmas Eve.
Alright, well, the public probably doesn't even know everybody.
It'd be too late for that.
We'll adjourn the meeting.
Are you gonna tell her, Merry Christmas?